Hey Brittany.
Hey, how are you?
Okay, I'm doing dual meetings tonight, so I have you up on my personal computer and then I have the city council up on my regular computer.
Well, you lucky lady.
I know, I'm just so lucky sometimes.
Yeah.
Huh?
You don't have a new, your own personal code. I still haven't learned how to do that. So, you know how to do that?
Um.
So, let's see.
Um, so Brittany, I was just gonna let you know, our first group up tonight is Republic Services.
Okay.
And so there's a guy named Mark Petrovic and then Justin Davis, that is from Republic Services. So, um, once the group is ready to start with that one, you can just bring those guys right on over.
Okay, I'm sorry, can you hold on just one second?
Sure, no problem.
Okay, so when Carson comes in, I'll make him co-host, but not you.
No, because I'm gonna have to probably jump off too.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, but yeah, then there will take, do you want to take a roll call or do you want me to take a roll call?
You said.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
And then we'll jump into the first interview and then, um, so I'll help Carson get to that point.
Mm-hmm.
And then I'll be back for the end.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a couple of discussion items, but really we shouldn't have any votes tonight.
So, when somebody does a motion, who, who does that? Do I say? How do you vote and how do you vote?
I'll do it tonight, yeah.
What if you're not there?
I'll do it.
He'll do it?
He'll do it.
Okay.
He wants to co-host, so I'm like, okay, go ahead.
All right, okay.
So.
Because I was definitely layman at that first time and now I'm super gun-shy.
Well, just follow, so if you pull up the old minutes, just read people's names off and then, you know, noted on a piece of paper.
And I have my things, like, take notes for the minutes tonight.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I have the minutes.
Okay.
Yes, I think I'm ready.
Yeah, so if you just read Matty's name.
I'm ready.
And Jeff Frazier is no longer on, so really there's only seven, right?
Yeah, so, so we have Coanabi, not Koanabi.
Yep.
Coanabi, Brown, Green, Hubka, Borman, I'm missing one.
Uh, Labe, Labe, okay. Marcy Brown.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, you did it, Brown, yeah.
Two, three, four, five, six.
Yeah.
Frazier, no Ward.
Oh, yeah, Brenda, oh Christine Brinker.
Brinker, yeah.
All these B-names.
Oh, okay.
Cool.
All right.
Perfect.
I'll be on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm sorry Janet.
Oh, no, you are just fine.
I have.
So, I was just gonna say, um, uh, so for the first one, which is Republic Services.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that we have two people that'll be attending.
Okay.
So, the first one is, um, Mark Petrovic.
Mark Petrovic, okay.
And then the second one is Justin Davis.
Petrovic, Justin Davis, and those are former colleagues.
And then, yep, and then for Waste Management, um, there may be three, so there's.
Are we having Waste Management? Wait, who did we have last week? Waste Connection?
Yeah.
Wait, okay, it's this Waste Management today.
Waste Management, yep, and for them, we have, um, Frank Santiago.
Okay.
Scott Hutchison. And Mark Sandicore.
Scott Hutchison and Mark Sandicore?
Yep, Sandicore.
Okay, all right, got it.
So then, um, they're supposed to pop on between six and seven, and seven and eight is how I did that breakdown. So, just so you know, potential people that might be floating in there.
Okay.
I have a feeling, um, my agenda item isn't gonna really start till maybe 7:30 or 8:00, so I may be on for the whole call.
Okay.
But if I pop off, you know what happened. Okay.
I will take very fastidious notes.
Okay, I think you and Maria will have it, so I'm not worried, okay?
Well, Maria said she's gonna jump off to go to the council meeting as well.
Oh, okay, yeah, I wasn't sure if she wanted to stay for both or not, so, um, I have both of them on my computer, so, um, I can kind of warn her when I'm about to hop off.
Okay.
She did say.
Said she'd be back and forth and that, uh, yeah.
Oh, there's Maria.
Yeah, she's here. Woo-hoo. Um, so, are there any, um, do we give a slap on the hand or anything if the people try and join early to watch the meeting? And, like, the people from Waste Management watch the Republic interview? No doubt, totally okay?
They're fine.
Okay.
It's all public, so.
Okay. Pre-gameing.
Um, Maria, I was, uh, I have both of my computers running, so I can watch both. Um, so if it's, when it's getting kind of close on the other one, do you want me to text you to pop over to the city council one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then I'll go depending on how, where we are in this agenda, if I can't, um, then you'll just have to do it at the other one.
Yeah, and I think we'll be fine, um, Brian and I kind of, Steve threw out his back, so he's not gonna be on tonight, but Brian and I both will be, so, and we went through the questions and everything, so I feel pretty confident.
Okay.
And your comments were really clear, um, so I think we're okay.
Okay.
Okay, and then, um, but I will text you when I'm hopping over, just so you know that, hey, Janet's gone. And then I gave Brittany, um, the name, names of the people who responded for Republic Service and then also, um, Waste Management, um, so that she can, um, bring them in when it's time.
Okay. Sounds good.
And they're still in executive session, so it's kind of like, it was just really convenient that they went into that executive session, so I could chat with you guys really quickly.
Oh, I'm sorry, just to remind myself, Green is, um, Chair Green, then Vice Chair, where if I have to call for, like, a motion or something, we call the Chair, then the Vice Chair, then all the members in alphabetical order.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Mm-hmm. Okay, and Borman is the Vice Chair?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I gotta ask Stephanie or Jackie about that, though, I thought we always, like, they always call the mayor last. You know, I know the rain did it that way with, she called Chair Ward first, but I don't think that's the way you do it, but we're fine for tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just.
I think a lot of times they do that just so that, um, the mayor or the chair is usually a deciding vote, but not sway the, the, um, proceedings one way or another.
Yeah, that's why they're always last.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know why they're doing it this way, but.
Should we sidebar with Green and ask him how he feels about it?
No, that's fine, it'll be fine.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Please let me know if that didn't work. It looks like it's good to me.
Yeah, it looks like it worked.
Okay, good. You're welcome.
All right, so, um, Mark Petrovic and Jonathan are the haulers, is that?
Jonathan Terrell and, and I, Mark Petrovic, we, uh, we are with Republic Services.
Okay, cool, we'll, we'll get to your part in a bit, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So, we have I see five members, what is our quorum director, DeAndrea?
Five or more should be fine.
Okay, so we have a quorum, and I know that Vice Chair, um, Borman said he was gonna be up to 10 minutes late, so he'll just join when he gets here, but we have enough for a quorum. So, I'll call the meeting to order, and, um, Director DeAndrea, will you be doing the roll calls, or someone else? You will, do you wanna do roll call?
Sorry, yeah, I'll, uh, I'll do roll call, I'm just trying to get my list here, so. Okay.
Vice Chair Borman is here, I just switched him to panel.
All right.
Thank you.
We'll take the roll call, Member Borman, or excuse me, Vice Chair Borman?
Here.
Member Brinker?
Here.
Member Brown? Let's see, hurry up, Member Hubka?
Here.
Member Coanabi?
Here.
Member Labe?
Here.
And Chair Green?
Present.
Thank you, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Um, let's, uh, I know we have the order on here with our minutes and stuff, I suggest we move that to the end, so we can get to the, um, what's, we do have it's, oh, and Marcy, uh, Member Brown just got here too, so I'm moving her over. And then we have one person in attendance named, uh, Susan, so, uh, if you would like to, if you're public wanting to, um, provide public comment, then please raise your hand or go off mute and speak up now. Seeing no hands and hearing nothing.
Susan Roundy is actually part of the Republic team.
See, okay, it just says Susan, and there was a person last time who was Susan that was in public but didn't speak up, maybe it's her as well.
Okay.
But she's part of your team?
Yes, sir.
So she may need to speak?
Uh, she may, yes.
Okay, I'll just go ahead and move her over in case she needs to say something. All right, so then there's no one, um, showing up for public comment, so we'll move on, and we'll go ahead and start, we'll, we'll address the motions if there's really anything to talk about that later as well, but let's go ahead and start with, um, Republic Services, so, um, Mr. Petrovic, go ahead and introduce yourself and your team, and, um, welcome, and thank you for coming to talk to us and answer our questions.
Sure, sure, no problem, so my name is Mark Petrovic, uh, I am with Republic Services, uh, and my team members that are here with me today is Jonathan Terrell, he is our Business Unit Finance Manager, uh, for the hauling division here in Colorado, and Susan Roundy is the Municipal Contract Administrator, so she and I work closely together.
Okay, thank you, um, so, members of our, um, committee, just go ahead and start raising hands with questions. I don't see any yet, I had one question right off the bat on your answers, can you clarify what FL, RL, and F recycle mean?
Yes, so, that, that's riff, uh, that was referencing the commercial services we provide, so FL is a frontload, uh, so that would be the, the commercial trucks that you see that have the forks in the front and they drive up and they stab the container in the front and lift it, and it services on the top of the truck, so that's a frontload, um, and RL is a rearload, you've seen that, uh, where they reload them in the back, and so it's a rearload, and then the FR is a frontload recycle, so it services the same as the trash, but it's just, uh, referenced as an FR for a frontload recycle truck.
Okay. Member Brinker?
Hi, Mark and team, thanks for joining us, um, I wonder if you could tell us about the other jurisdictions kind of in the Denver metro area that you provide service to under a similar single hauler trash contract, and how that might, how those might be similar to or different from, um, some of the ideas we're looking at here.
Okay, sure, no problem, so, um, we have quite a few, uh, partner cities that we work with as far as, uh, the residential service, so so I'll talk first about the pay-as-you-throw, because we have a mix of both, we have cities that are a pay-as-you-throw with multiple carts, and then we have cities that, uh, are uniform as far as cart size, meaning everyone has a 96-gallon trash and recycle. So, the, um, the cities of Lafayette and the city of Lewisville, those two cities both operate on a pay-as-you-throw program, and they also have a third waste stream, uh, meaning they have regular, every other week, compost collection, so, those cities have, uh, three different cart sizes for trash, they have three different cart sizes for compost, and then they have a uniform, uh, large size for recycle. So those programs are the most robust, meaning those are the two cities that we service that actually have three waste streams, trash goes every week, recycle and compost go every other week, and then they alternate weeks, so the, the same vehicle that collects compost one week, the following week it collects recycle, and so they're on off weeks, uh, and they each go, uh, twice a month. We also service the city of Edgewater and the city of Sheridan, they too also have a volume-based pay-as-you-throw, uh, program, so they have three different cart sizes for trash, uh, the 35, 65, and 95 gallon, and then they have, uh, and I'm going off of memory, but I believe that they have access to a 65-gallon recycle or a 95-gallon recycle, so they have choices of recycling, um, it's all embedded into the rate of trash, so really, the, the size of the recycle is just based on their volume or maybe where they live, they don't want, um, a large, uh, 95-gallon recycle. So those are the four cities that we service that actually do have the pay-as-you-throw, uh, program, city of Arvada is one that has not started yet, that will start in July of '21, that is a volume-based pay-as-you-throw, so the trash cans are all three different sizes, uh, 35, 65, 95, and the recycle is all 95, and so, there's one rate for each size container, and that does include, uh, recycling, but they only offer one, uh, recycle size, but they do get three choices for trash. We have other cities that we partner with that are just the 95, they don't do the volume-based trash carts, that is Commerce City, uh, is one, city of Greenwood Village, town of Morrison, and a, and the town of Foxfield, they, uh, and Greenwood Village, I, I don't know if I mentioned them, so Greenwood Village also, they all They all utilize the 95 gallon trash container, so. Everyone gets the same rate. Everyone has the same size trash container. All of those cities are cart content only, except for Greenwood Village. They had a program, an older program that is. It doesn't limit it to the cart. But that I would imagine is going to change in the future, but at this point it does not have limits on the amount of trash that people can put out. So those are all the cities. I think there are nine in total, including I'd have to go back and count, but I believe there's nine in total, including Arvada.
Thank you. That's super helpful. Can I ask, are there any of those that have alley pickup? We know that alley pickup has been. An outspoken priority of a lot of Inglewood residents, and we know that's something kind of unique that we're looking at compared to other cities.
Yeah, so so the city of Edgewater would be one. The city of Edgewater is probably 95% alley, maybe 90. It's pretty high. So most of Edgewater is alley service, and we collect it all in rear-load trucks. They do have a couple of streets. Oh, like Marshall, Newland and Pierce up up like by 26th, right? And then in that little area, there are some curbside. Places that we service, and we just could also pick them up in rear-load trucks. So they are the majority alley. In Lafayette and Lewisville, we do have a little section, and they take about a half a day each. We service those cities in four days, and there is a very small section in downtown Lewisville and downtown Lafayette that are alley service. So those have a rear-load truck that collects whatever is in there in the alley, but it's all alley. It's not. It's not alley and curbside. So what's what's alley is all alley through that downtown area, and then those rear-load trucks would go and carry on with their normal. Curbside collection. So we do have a few. We also have some in Commerce City. There are some. But the majority of what's in Commerce City are the Commerce City's really growing, and Maria would know this. They're really growing, and a lot of the. Alley we have there are the new construction to where the homes face the street, but the alleys. Are paved and all their garages, they access their garages from the alley, so we technically call that an alley, but they are still serviced with a side-load vehicle. They don't need to have a rear-load for that kind of alley work.
Thank you very much.
Just to add on this, when you said. Like for Edgewater, that's 95% alley, does that mean that there recycling is also alley?
Yes.
Thank you. Member Brown.
Hi, good evening. Um, did I understand you correctly, sir, when you said that recycling would be a 95 gallon drum?
Yes, in the cities that, well, it's a little bit of a mix. We have some cities that offer a 95 and a 65. But the majority of cities, so Commerce City, Arvada, a lot of cities just offer a 95 gallon recycle. Now, with that said. There are folks, whether they were elderly or didn't have a lot of volume, or maybe they had a physical inability to move that size of container. We do swap lids. We'll swap a recycle lid onto a smaller cart for one-off situations, so those things do come up, and we do accommodate. Those when they come up, but the majority of cities feel that they want people to have the most capacity for recycling, even if they have a small trash container, so. That tends to be the default size for recycle.
And then could I just follow that up with one more question, please?
Oh, please do.
Thank you. So are you making recycle mandatory to all these cities?
It's not mandatory, but if someone opts out saying, I don't want a recycle cart, I don't want to recycle. There's no difference in the rate that they pay because the rate is all just embedded into the trash cart size that they have. If it's a pay-as-you-throw. Or if it's a single-sized trash cart, then there's no discount on the rate. We do remove the cart from them. We don't require them to keep it. If they don't want to participate, we will remove the container, and then they won't be routed for recycle collection, and we do have people that opt out. I would say on average of all the cities we serve, we have maybe 1 to 3% i- in that range of people that opt out and do not want to recycle.
But it's still the same rate whether you recycle or not.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Vice Chair Borman.
Yeah, I actually just had a question about. You said that there are some wider alleys that are paved, and they actually can have the automated arms going up and down. Why of an alleyway are we talking about? And also, I guess, how much overhead clearance are we talking about to be able to do that? In a place like Inglewood, or is it even possible in a place like Inglewood? Are our alleys way too narrow?
The. The the alleys in Inglewood would would they're not, it's not, they're not wide enough to actually have. A side-load vehicle go through them. I mean, rear loads will fit, but not a not a side-load. The the cities that have the paved alleys I'm talking about, these tend to be brand-new construction within the last couple of years, so all the utilities are buried. We don't have an overhead line issue. Which we do in a lot of areas. That's always a concern, especially with front-load vehicles or with an automated arm overhead lines, but. The alleys that are new that are paved with these new builds, all the utilities are underground.
Thank you.
Uh, member Kwanabe.
Yeah, welcome team and good evening. Thanks for showing up tonight. I had some questions about your customer service. It looks like a pretty impressive response times, but wanted to get a sense of how many service calls per year are directly related to a mistake by your company? And are there trends up and down year over year, or are they about the same every year?
How? That's a a good question. I'm not sure if I have the exact answer of how many. Calls or missed pickup calls. I mean, it's a mix, and it ebbs and flows, right? So. When we have a holiday and a holiday falls on a service day, and it's a holiday that we observe. And there is a day delay from that holiday and beyond, we get a lot of missed pickup calls because people may put their stuff out on a normal day, and we're on a day delay, or. That weather event we just had, people, we have a lot of calls and missed pickups because we're on a delay to weather, so. It ebbs and flows, and you know, I may I may lean on Susan a little bit here because Susan does. Susan puts together all of the statistics we have for the cities every month, and. She may have an idea of the percentage of calls that we get, the how many are missed pickups?
Well, I would say more than just missed pickups, right? Like trash spills or putting trash into the recycling. Or recycling into the trash, I would say.
Well, mixing waste, you know, we do get those once in a while. We've had that happen more often than not. That's just someone. Confused because our trucks don't have a big recycle sticker on them. They look the same. You can have two trucks that look the same. One came by and got trash. One comes by and gets recycled. We have had drivers put grab the wrong can and put it in the in the in the waste. Like a recycle in the waste truck by mistake, and we've had people call. Those would be very rare. Those are rare calls. The common calls you get are, I had a missed pickup. What's my service day? Are we on a delay? Can I get a calendar? I want to schedule a bulk item. So it's really, it's all over the board, but the thing about co-mingling waste, that's a that's a big deal to us. If we had a driver actually doing that on purpose. That's a terminatable, you know, act, right? That's something we don't do. We don't mix waste from one to the other. For for numerous reasons. One, people expect their waste to go to wherever it's going, whether it's trash. Recycle or compost, and then also it contaminates the load if you're putting trash in a recycle truck. You know, so it's hard to say. It's really just, it's a mix. It's all over the board. We. You know, in Commerce City, there's 17,000 homes, a little over almost 18,000, and I think we're taking. 3,000 calls, maybe 5,000 calls a month. Susan, if she's able to speak, she would know how many we're taking a month, but you know, so it's it's a mix.
It's between 3 and 5,000 a month. For Commerce City.
3 to 5,000 calls per month, and do you know around what percentage would be at fault of? Because I know a lot would be, you know, just a misunderstanding.
By. We provide statistics to Commerce City every month, and so we track every miss that's called in. And and then we dig into, we get to the root cause of every miss. Did the customer not have their can out? Was it blocked? I mean, there could be numerous reasons. Maybe it was. Who knows? Maybe it was contaminated if it's a recycle container, so we do document that, and so we just went over the statistics with another city, Commerce City. Today, as a matter of fact, and in the month of March. We had 122, I think it was 100, yeah, 122,000 drive-bys. In the month of March, and what I mean by a drive-by is. We drive by someone's home almost 18,000 times a week to service those customers, and then we also service recycle customers, and when you. Put that out for the entire month of March, which is a long month, we touched a Commerce City customer a little over 122,000 times. And we had 26 true misses in the month of March. So our accuracy rate for the month of March was 99.98%.
That's that's really impressive. I had one follow-up question, Chairman Green, if that's okay?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Um, you mentioned that that your chucks aren't marked very well with recycling. Would that be something you would be considering so that we can promote recycling so that 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 would much be much more prevalent and relevant or? Or visible, not by just the the community, but by the residents as well?
Right, and I've and I've had that question before, and so here's the simple answer. Is these trucks get moved around? They could be used for recycle one week, and if, let's say, the other truck had a mechanical, it could go out and collect trash. And so if we had something on the vehicle, you know, that was like part of the truck, part of the branding, and then it's actually not collecting recycle right now. It's collecting trash. That's going to promote a lot of calls. And so the trucks, because you do have breakdowns and different things, they could be moved around and used in different areas, and that's why they're not labeled as such. I mean, I understand where you're coming from, and that's really just kind of an operational thing of why we don't do it. The only real way to know is. Is if a driver comes by and he's just picking up one can, right? And whatever that lid color, the lid color designates what it is. At Republic. We have a black lid for trash, and we have a a very light kind of powder blue lid for recycle, so they are very different looking. Now, if you saw a truck picking up one and then picking up the other, that's a big problem. That's something we would be notified of because he's obviously picking up two different waste streams at the same time. I think I've had one or two calls of that happening, and I think it was a disgruntled employee over the 12 years I've been at Republic, and that was addressed immediately, and so. It's very, very rare that that would happen.
But I'm thinking more about the the publication for the recycling, right?
Yeah.
Not just not just the mistake itself. Like if you just had a sliding placard, right?
Yeah, I mean, if it was a, I mean, we have had a driver, you know, drivers are out and they're picking up, you know, 800 to 1,000 stops a day. And we've had a driver that's like, oh, my goodness, I was just going through the motion, and I grabbed, I grabbed the wrong cart and tipped it. It it happens. They're human. They're but really, really rare. You know, they're out there doing their thing. They know what waste stream they're collecting. And they they don't kind of mix and match. The only time, you know, when they go out on route, they're running an MSW. They're running a municipal solid waste trash route. And then they know they're running a recycle route. They go to different places to take that material, so it's not something where they're mixing and matching what they're doing during the day. They're essentially running that route all day.
So they really. I get it. Yeah, Mark, I get it. I'm I'm more but talking about marking the trucks. That's that's pretty much the point. That's the point on the second one.
Yeah, so that's something that that we don't do, and I I don't foresee that really happening.
Got it. Okay, thank you very much.
Hey, Mark, can you touch really quick on the outreach that we do do to, you know, promote things such as recycling?
Sure. Yeah, so there's all kinds of outreach that we do, so whether it's collateral that we're we're mailing things to people. We have cart hangers that we put on recycle truck or recycle carts when carts are delivered to them so they know what to do. We have a website called Recycling Simplified on the Republic website, which goes into all kinds of information, everything that has to do with recycling, and there's numerous. YouTube videos, and they tend to run about 60 to 90 seconds each, so they're very short and sweet. They get to the point. The collateral and education that we do is really in partnership with the city, so. Whether it's on the city website, a Republic website, collateral that's mailed out to people. All the calendars that we send out every year about your service day and your recycle week, that has recycling information on it. Sometimes cities like it with a lot of pictures. Sometimes they like it with a lot of text. It really is built and designed in partnership with the city of really what you want to see, so. There's a ton of outreach and information about. What cart to put it in, how to prepare your recyclables. We have a lot of information on something called. It's a trademarked advertisement from Republic called Empty Clean Dry. All the recyclables we want empty, we want them rinsed out, and we want them dry, so we get a clean stream. So there's just really a lot of information available to residents and stuff that is part of a contract that we do. All that marketing and outreach is included in our rate, so we we have that built into it so we can do outreach several times a year.
Uh, to extend on the question about customer service, you said that you have a customer-first email process. Customer can contact via email. Is that true email? They can send an email from their own email, not have to go through a web form?
It's a web form.
Okay, so are they able to initiate anything that they might have to through a phone call from this web form?
They could. There there's a phone number to call, so they can call, or some people just prefer to send it through a web form.
What I'm getting at is we're we're wanting to make sure that. Like part of RFP is going to include that citizens be able to initiate a request without having to wait on the phone or for a chat. Where they can submit a notification of a missed pickup or make a request about a container, etc., where they're not having to wait at all. They they initiate the request, and then it's on you guys to get back to them either through email or call them. And not make the person wait because we know that that's one of the big complaints is people, even when. It's reported that call times are short, etc. People end up having to wait, and they don't want to have to wait, and we want to make sure that's convenient.
So a web form would be filled out, and that would have their name, their address, their contact phone number, what the issue is, so they could send that in, and then they will be contacted. If it's a missed pickup, then it's like, okay, well, we're going to come back. We'll be back at this time. And some people can say, I only want to be contacted via email. I want to be phoned back. I mean, they can give a preference of how they like to be contacted.
And that's currently how it works?
Yeah, they send it to us.
That's great. That's unusual, too, because I don't think many of the other haulers have such a good system that enables people to. Make a request without having to wait. I'm glad to know that you guys already have that.
There is also a program called manager account where you can report a miss, request additional container that will notify us also to contact the resident.
Thank you. That's great. Member Brinker.
I, you know, if if that option is available on your app?
That's what Susan was just talking about. That's our app, on the Republic Services app.
Great, thanks.
Um, why did you stop providing alley service?
We didn't.
We are currently providing alley service in Inglewood.
Not to new customers, though, right?
It should still be just new customers.
Yeah.
Interesting, because when I personally, when I had Lee's, they got bought by American, they got bought by Waste Connections. And Waste Connections discontinued alley service, and then I called around to everyone, including Republic, and was told that. Uh, new customers could not get alley service. So did you change that policy? That's what I was told when I contacted Republic.
Best news to me, we have not eliminated alley service. I mean, we don't have any subscription area that we have eliminated alley service, so that could have been an error. From our customer resource center, from the agent you spoke with. You know, and Susan, you can pipe in too, but I don't know of any subscription area we service that we are not, that we're refusing to do alley service.
There are a whole bunch of people posting on Nextdoor that they had the same experience as me as well, because a lot of people were. Disappointed in losing alley service because it was canceled through that other, you know, hauler buying up the others. And everyone around here was trying to find alley service, and several people reported that. Republic said that new customers were not able to get alley service, so I I would have probably switched to you, but couldn't because I was told I couldn't, and other people were too.
That's news to me. I mean, we can look into that and and dig in. That's news to me. I mean, we can look into that and, and dig into, to what's going on, but, but to my knowledge, we have not eliminated any.
No, we had not. I had set up multiple people calling, asking for alley service because of other providers canceling it.
And do you provide alley service for recycling currently?
Yeah.
Okay. So you, for new customers, you currently provide alley waste and recycling service in Inglewood?
Yes.
Okay. That's great to hear. Didn't know it.
Generally, if, I mean, if we're picking someone's trash up in the alley, their recycle's in the same location. So, you know, so I mean, if it's in the alley, then whatever service, I mean, if they request a bulk item and they're a customer of ours and they're in the alley, then the bulk gets picked up there. So whatever, you know, if they're an alley customer, they're an alley customer.
Okay.
And then there, so at our call center, we have something called a knowledge management tool and it, and it helps the agent about where, you know, about Inglewood and what's going on and what are the rates and this and that and what recycle costs. And, and so we need to look on there and make sure there's nothing on that knowledge management tool that says that alley service is not provided because that's an error. And I don't think it says that, but we'll look into that and make sure that it's accurate.
Yeah. I mean, we definitely lost a lot of potential new customers during that period. Cause I mean, I saw several people saying the same thing on Nextdoor. One of the things that we know is going to be in the RFP is requiring, um, yard waste as put out next to the cart be included in the service. There are providers that, it sounds like you provide that to some, but you're, you said you're trying to phase it out. Um, but that is something that we know that we're going to require because if we're forcing all citizens to go on to a particular single hauler, we're not going to take away the level of service that they're used to. And many haulers currently include when someone puts out yard waste and bundled branches, that that's just included in what's taken away, which obviously only happens a couple of times a year. But it's an unscheduled thing because it depends on when they have to deal with low hanging branches, et cetera. Um, is that an issue? Is that? Is there a reason that you wouldn't be able to do that?
Um, well, I would say, um, is it an issue? I don't know if it's an issue if, but it is something that needs to be addressed and it needs to be calculated in for the rates. And where it becomes a problem is when you, if you're servicing curbside people and you're in an automated truck, you cannot hand load it. And so if you have branches sitting on the ground, they can't, even if they're bundled or bags of leaves, it can't be hand loaded. And so then what you do is if the guy services, the man or woman services the container, puts the container back down, then have to exit the truck, put the stuff back into the container and then tip it again. So when, if you're going to require that, then that gets calculated into the cost to serve. So it's, I wouldn't say it's an issue. It's just something that has to be calculated into the cost to serve. So if drivers have to get out and hand load material, well, instead of servicing a thousand people a day, maybe they service seven hundred. I mean, I don't, those are calculations that Jonathan and I, we put together on what the requirement is. And then what it costs to serve. And that's really, it's just a time issue, time, uh, and for our drivers to actually get in and get out and do that and service extras. Now, if you're going to put out an RFP for a pay-as-you-throw program and you're requiring people to take, you're requiring haulers to take material outside of the cart, that really just takes away from what the program's intent is. You could have everyone sign up for the smallest cart and then put a bunch of stuff on the ground next to it. Does that make sense? It doesn't, if you, if I was a consumer and I could pay ten dollars a month for a thirty-five gallon, but I wasn't limited to the cart and I could put material on the ground, then I would sign up for the least expensive cart and I would put material outside the cart. Does that make sense? It, it deteriorates.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Program, right?
Right. Now, if, is, would pay-as-you-throw make the program overall more or less expensive as a whole to the city?
No, because I mean, you're going to have. So what happens in the pay-as-you-throw is you have the heavy producers of trash and you have the very light producers, right? Statistically, for, uh, without compost, and if you compare a city like Edgewater, right, that has trash and recycle, they have a three cart trash system. They have about twenty-five percent of their residents are in a thirty-five gallon. They have about forty-five that are in a sixty-five and then the balance, right? Then you have about another forty that are in, uh, the, in the ninety-five gallon. So you get kind of a mix, right, of, of carts. And it kind of all balances out. The ninety-five is obviously the most expensive, but you have a fair, you know, twenty, twenty-five to thirty percent of people are in a small container because they generate very little waste that, you know, that, that really balances it out. I, off of memory, I'm thinking about Edgewater. I think if you blended all three cart sizes and the mix that they have, they're right around fourteen dollars a month on average is what the cost is if you blended it from the smallest container in the mix all the way through. So if you, if you blend it all together compared to what people are paying for subscription rates now, it's absolutely less overall, even if you average it out of, of the mix of carts. Now that depends on what Inglewood's mix would be, but it's statistically, you're going to have people in other sizes other than ninety-fives.
So a fixed size across the whole city for the deal, even though that eliminates having to deal with different size carts, you're saying that that wouldn't end up being more cost-effective than pay-as-you-throw?
More cost-effective for who? The resident?
I, for, as a whole, total cost?
Total cost? I, it would be hard to answer that because I would have to know the mix, right? If, if the mix of carts of a pay-as-you-throw is going to determine what the average, the blended average through the whole program, and then compared to what it would be if everyone had a fixed rate, the cart. And so I would say they're probably going to be pretty close. Um, so, yeah, I mean, it, it, it depends on the mix of carts. And it also depends on if you have a requirement as a city on what your multiplier would be. Some cities have a hundred percent multiplier from one size to the next. Lafayette and Louisville do that. Edgewater has an eighty percent up, um, uptick or increase, right? So from the thirty-two gallon to the sixty-four, the, the requirement is an eighty percent increase from that base rate and then eighty percent to the ninety-five. Our VADA has a fifty percent increase from one size to the next. So it depends on what the, if a city has a requirement on what the increase should be between cart sizes, that plays a role in it. And then the blend of mixed of who, how, the percentage of people that are in each cart size.
Okay. Thank you. Remember Hubka? Remember Hubka?
Chair Green, did you see that, um, um, Dane Borman is waiting to get in? He needs to be
Oh.
Promoted. Thanks.
Okay, thanks.
And yeah, sorry. Can you hear me?
Yeah, now I can.
Okay. Sorry, I was double muted. Um, okay. So we just want to, um, just kind of reiterate where Carson, I think was going with some of this is, um, two of the most important things to the city of Inglewood is one, the ability to do front street and alley service. And we've been told that alley services, um, can be a pediment. Um, and also, uh, the cost. You know, right now, everybody, um, the average cost for everybody is probably about twenty-five dollars a month, you know? That doesn't really, there's no one carrier that's cheaper than the other. So, uh, but that a lot of times does include putting a few extra things out on the side, like the bundles, right? So would the most economical, um, RFP might be, um, a pay-as-you-go? And then, um, the consumer asks or requests and pays this extra three dollars a bag or bundle? Would, would that be kind of the way we, you think we need to go?
I mean, yeah, it can be structured that way. We also run events, right? So we do hold events uh, for residents to bring because we understand in the spring and in the fall, right? We've got, everyone's in the yard in the spring. You've got all the winter kill branches and shrubs. So they have a lot of that debris that we do offer events to where people can drop material off, right? So they can bring them to roll-offs and drop it off. If the city said, look, we want to have events and it has to be curbside, well, then that's built into the cost, right? We have to, we have to account for that. The man hours, the truck hours, the time and the disposal, especially if you want that material to be composted, then that gets worked into what the cost would be to cover those events. Um, our VADA, for example, they have a fee, I think it's eighty-eight cents a month to every resident. And that covers the cost of bulk drop-off events and green waste drop-off events. So it's free to the residents to show up and do it because there's an eighty-eight cent fee on their bill every month uh, to the city, not to Republic. And then the city pays Republic for, for doing those events. So you can structure it several different ways. Lafayette, for example, has drop-off. They have forty-yard roll-offs at Public Works where people bring materials. So you could have it to where people pay to play, right? They pay to have their green waste picked up. Or they pay to have bulk. You could have special events. Um, or you could have curbside events, but those are, we've steered away from those in the past years. And I think other haulers have, as have as well, because they're very expensive to run and we can't do them for free. And so they have to be a fee-based service. But there are several different ways to structure it. To go back to your first question about can we, um, you know, do the alley and the curb? Yes, we can. We have the equipment to do the alley service on something like Inglewood, just like other municipalities we've partnered with. Part of the process, the financial model that Jonathan puts together is we purchased new trucks to do these contracts. They're a long-term contract. We know the work that we're going to be doing. And so we have, we know exactly what we're going to do every day of the week and for how many years. And so we purchased new equipment and there would be automated side-load trucks and there would be rear-load trucks that would be purchased. But one of the things about Inglewood that, that the, the prices to serve were higher is because we have to service both. And let me, let me try to back up a little bit and explain it. When we, when we service in, let's say Lafayette, the, the downtown alley streets, the alleys that we service, it's all alley. So that whole grid in downtown, what we're servicing is alley. And then that truck moves on and then it's doing all of its curbside. The way Inglewood's set up is it's a mix. You have, you know, you can have a block of twenty homes. You could have, you know, eight of them are alley serviced and twelve of them on that block are curbside. So it's a mix. And a lot of those homes that are alley service, they don't have access to the curbside. So it has to be both. And so that's what drives the cost up is you have, instead of one truck servicing twenty homes, you have two trucks. You have one in the alley servicing eight as an example. And then, you know, the other one, curbside servicing twelve. And so there, you're losing efficiencies when you have to have two trucks servicing the same block. And then those trucks, when they're picking up eight out of twenty on the block, well, they're skipping quite a few. And when you're picking up twelve curbside, you're skipping eight. And so you're losing efficiency. And in our world, in, in the, in the solid waste business, everything is productivity and efficiency. That's where the economies of scale come from. So when you start carving out pieces like that, which is necessary in Inglewood, just the way it's set up and, and the homes, how they're set. That's where the cost to serve gets a little higher because you're having two trucks and two drivers servicing a block, as just an example, as opposed to one.
Did you have any other questions? Remember Hubka?
Well, yeah, no, that, that explains that cost of alleys. We, we kind of know that. We, we don't have a very perfect infrastructure. But then getting back to just keeping the overall cost down with this, I can just tell you that we're not interested in, um, drop-off events. And one of the reasons is, is because this event would have to, we're a very kind of compact city. There's just not a lot of places where we can gather a whole bunch of big pieces of trash without taking over a park or a parking lot. So we're just FYI to you, we are more interested in having, special item pickup and, um, a pickup for yard waste. Um, we also have a bit of a problem with, um, and it's not huge, but, uh, people drop off their couches and mattresses in our, in our alleys. So, um, we need a company to do that. And it's perfectly understandable if that's an extra fee. I think it would, I'm pretty sure that everyone would prefer the lowest cost um, monthly and then pay extra when those things happen for, for house pickup, just so you know. I'll lower my hand.
So, uh, so here's a question. So when things are dropped in the alley, who do we tie that to as a hauler? If we're going to pick up a couch, that's abandoned. Who pays that?
The citizen is paid, pays that and they usually hire a, a junk man or some guy with a pickup truck.
Yeah, currently it's the citizens' responsibility in Inglewood, including our, our, there's a recent story that our mayor had to deal with something that was dumped behind her house.
Okay.
I've had three melter's in the last six months. So, yeah, I know.
So that's just one of those scenarios that if a, a mattress or a couch was dumped aside behind someone's house and the hauler picks it up and then the hauler bill, needs to bill the resident for it, then they're going to say that, that wasn't mine. I was illegally dumped on. How do we, how do we work around? I know we're getting into the weeds a little bit. I just wanted to throw that out there. Unless it's a prepay, right? Like it's sitting there and then someone, uh, we have to schedule it with the homeowner and they have to prepay. Cause once it's picked up and removed, it didn't belong to anyone. I, I mean, we've been doing this long enough. This isn't, you know, our first go with this. And so we know how people game the system. And so we just kind of need to plan ahead of, of how we would address that or get prepaid, or maybe the city pays for illegal dumping to be cleaned up or something along those lines.
Yeah, that makes sense. I don't believe we're suggesting that large item pickup would be without scheduling and coordination. And, and we understand that that's going to cost extra. It's the, it's the yard waste um, being included that is separate from that. And I see how that makes sense as a problem with pay-as-you-throw, but do you currently pick up bundled branches and bags on the side of the cart for any Inglewood customers?
Oh, any subscription customer we have, uh, in Inglewood, they would be subject to the three dollar a bag for anything extra that's outside of the cart. That's the current program.
So there's no one grandfathered in with included?
Pardon me?
There's no one grandfathered in currently with, uh, that's where that's included?
You know, I would say there probably is. I mean, the, the three dollar a bag fee is something that we've implemented within the last year. Um, and I, Justin Davis is on the call. He's, uh, he is, uh, runs our operations, uh, out of Commerce City. So that's something that we have implemented here recently, uh, whether it's a year, a year and a half. I don't know the exact amount. And the reason being is that the volumes of trash were out of hand. And so there was just so much volume coming in that we needed to scale back and get people to actually be functioning in a cart. And that's why we started charging for additional bags. Five years ago, um, the, the five years ago, I think that the, the service was cart plus seven bags. And I think it's scaled down to cart plus three bags. And now it's down to cart content only. And so it has evolved over time as our fleet has evolved to being fully, fully automated trucks and not really hand-loadable, except for the rear load. And so even the folks that have been a customer of Republic for a long time, they were notified of the changes in the bag fees. Um, and that happened here recently. And so I don't think anyone's grandfathered in of being able to put extra trash. Doesn't mean we don't have a driver that helps people out and takes a bag and doesn't charge them. You know, the drivers, we have a hundred and fifty routes running every day. Does a driver take a bag here or there? I'm sure they do. But as a general rule, every subscription customer, not just in Inglewood, but everyone uh, was notified that we were implementing a bag fee.
Thank you. I know Director DeAndrea had her hand up, but it's down. And also Vice Chair Borman, do either of you have questions?
Yeah, thanks, Carson. I, I've been putting my hand up just to um, jump in. But Mark, if you could maybe talk a little bit, what are some of the concerns besides the cost about the large item pickup? At curb or alley? And how have other communities kind of worked, if, if you have any knowledge? If, if you have any knowledge about getting items? I think the biggest issue, you know, if you're a senior citizen or anybody, if you don't have the right vehicle, how do you get the large items to the park, let's say, or, or to the MSC?
Right. So one of the things that we do in a lot of cities and Commerce City is included in this is that we provide curbside bulk at a very discounted rate. And so people schedule a bulk with us to have it picked up curbside. And it's at a very discounted rate for the residents. But it has to be scheduled because the Commerce City resident is serviced on their normal waste with an automated truck. And so we have to pre-schedule and rerun specific routes with a rear load truck to go collect these bulks. And so, you know, we get bulk orders, they get aggregated together and then they're going to pick up the bulks in Commerce City. And then maybe they go to unincorporated Adams County or however the, however the operational routing works. But they have to be scheduled because we need to send a rear load truck. Now in Inglewood, you, you have rear load trucks because you have people that are serviced alley and have to be serviced alley. And so you would have a rear load truck in the area. And so you could schedule bulks curbside and that alley truck could do its regular normal service and then also have a list on their route sheet of bulks that were required to be picked up. And generally what we do is, you know, in some instances we offer, you know, maybe they get one or two free bulks a year. And so people get one or two free a year and then maybe that's all they need. And if people need more, then it's fee based. And then we track all of that. So all the information's tracked. And that's kind of stuff, when, when we build the financial model, we all get together with Jonathan, right? And we look at what the city wants and then how we're going to service it and what it costs to serve. So the operations team, the finance, we all get together and go through what is needed and what the city wants. And if we're going to do those two free a year, let's say, well, you calculate that out. And then when you break it down to everyone, right? The, the whole city, when you break it down, it works out to cents a month, right? When you spread it all out, it's, you're not talking dollars. You're talking, you know, if everyone's going to get two free bulks a year, it could be adding five or seven cents a month to the fee, but for everyone, right? You spread it amongst everyone and that's the economies of scale that we talk about. So, you know, we look at the absolutes of what you're looking for and you're not the only city to say, look, you have a, a citizen that has a sedan. They can't get a sectional. And I mean, we get it, you know, we picked the stuff up. We know you can't fit it. And so it has to be curbsided. It's hard to get them to event. So those types of absolutes, you know, we talked about it earlier. I wouldn't say it's an issue. It's a want that we need to work with as a team and say, how do we accomplish this? The most cost effective way and spread it amongst everyone. So it's available to everyone. And the reality is when you spread it amongst everyone, not everyone utilizes it. It just gets spread, but it's so inexpensive to spread it amongst everyone. And then you go through the process. Some people will use one or two a year. Some people use 10 a year. And so they get two free and they pay for 10. It just, it really depends. We've saw, we have seen a really huge uptick in bulks from last March to this March. Cause when everyone was at home with COVID, right? Everyone's at home and then they're taking on projects and they're cleaning out a basement. It was so, it was so heavy that we had to suspend it for a while everywhere. Franchise cities, subscription, we had to just cancel bulk for a time being just to get caught up because it was a little crazy. It's tapered off to normal levels, but you know, Maria came from Commerce City and there are ways to structure having, you know, some curbside bulks. And then if they get past the freebies, then it's very discounted for them to pay to play.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Borman?
Yeah, I actually wanted to return to kind of talking about branches and stuff like that. So I was reading your responses about Lafayette, Louisville. And I was actually just wondering what the cost per month were to those two cities when it came to picking up really specifically like the compost or the, the organic waste sort of stuff. And then also just to double check, you can combine household compost with that yard waste? Is that also true?
So in Lafayette and Louisville, the compost program is yard waste and food waste, both. They can combine them both in the container. That material is taken to McDonald Farms Transfer and then it goes to A1 Organics is where it goes. And so they do take all of it. So the cities are structured a little differently. And, and they have similarities. So here are the similarities. Compost is a requirement in both cities and every resident pays. If there, there are residents, there's about a two to 3% opt out of compost in Lafayette. The resident still pays the minimum fee for the compost. Now I can have Susan help me out on this. I'm going off of memory. I think a 35 gallon compost container is about 550, 575 a month. Then I think it goes maybe up to eight or nine, then maybe 12 or 13 a month for the largest container. Am I even in the ballpark, Susan?
The 32 gallon is $5.12 a month. $8.96 for the 65 gallon and the 95 gallon is like 1282 a month. And it is part of their city ordinance that requires them to pay for the compost service.
And so, yeah, thank you, Susan. So I was fairly close. So that's the mix of what it costs. So that's just for the compost. That's not for the trash and, and, and recycle. So their trash and recycle, the 32 gallon container, I think starts around, it's at 11 or $12 for that container. And those cities require 100% multiplier. So that's the mix of pricing for compost. Louisville, we just took that contract over in 2018 or 19. It's two, it's two years old, I believe. When we took that over, they, they changed the way the program worked and they embedded the cost of compost into the trash and recycle rate. So you pay one rate for a 35 gallon trash container and you could have a 95 recycle and you could have a 95 compost. And that 35 gallon or 32 gallon container starts at $12 a month. The next container up, the 64 gallon is a $24 a month and then it's $38 a month for a 96. But that includes everything. And the reason Louisville changed to that is they felt that the pay to play cart size in compost was a barrier for people to compost more because it was expensive. They wa, you know, so they were going for the 32 gallon compost container. So they wanted to remove that barrier and they embedded it in the cost of trash. So you can have people that have paid $12 a month and they have a 32 gallon trash container and they have a 95 recycle and 95 compost. And they actually saw a fairly big uptick in people go from a 32 gallon compost to a 95 when they embedded it. However, the program is, it's expensive. I mean, they're, the, the 95 gallon trash container, if you add 95 trash and then 95, the other two recycling streams, you're paying $38 a month for service. So it's most certainly not expensive and that is by design. And they do require 100% multiplier. And there's really, there's no choice. People have three way streams and you could opt out of them, but you don't get any discount on the rate. The rate is what the rate is. So that kind of gives you the idea, the mix of, of what it is. Compost is an expensive program to run because Colorado, we lack such infrastructure on where to take the compost. Right now we use McDonald Farms Transfer. And if anybody knows where that's at, it's up on I-25 by Erie, right by the staff Toyota dealership, right? So it's pretty far north on I-25. That's where we have to take the compost. We dump it there and it gets transferred from there over to Kingsburg where A1 Organic's composting facility is at.
Thank you. Vice Chair Borman, you still have your hand up? Did you have another question?
I do. So we're, you know, we're kind of that branches and stuff like that outside. When it comes to the composting, things like that, in theory, if you got a 32 gallon compost and that was standard throughout the city, is it possible that we can put out additional things next to that that are compostable and that would be picked up? Or is that because that's an automatic load truck probably for a composter? That that would be just more difficult, I guess I would say, or more expensive?
I would say, I mean, if, I don't, I guess I don't, I'm not following why. If people were going to have the stuff outside of the can, then why not, you know, have the standard be a 64 gallon? It's just anytime you put something outside the can, you have to get out of the truck and hand load it. And that slows the process down. You know, just to give you an idea about the industry as a whole, we track, we're, we're very, very metric driven. We know that it takes about 28 seconds a house per drive by. And subscription could take 90 seconds because there's a space between when you service one house and you have to drive and you got space to another. So we, we know the metrics down to seconds. And so if you're going to put stuff out of the can and we can leave one house and then the clock starts, we drive to another house, we stop, we service it, we put it down, we leave to the next house and that's 28 seconds. Okay? Let's, I'm just using it as an example. If we have to get out and hand load stuff, I don't know, what is that going to add? Now are we up to 38 seconds? Are we up to 45 seconds? Well, if you take another 20 seconds per stop to, for us to get out and hand load and multiply that 20 seconds times 800 stops, it adds up and it adds a lot of hours and it adds cost to serve. That's the mindset that we go through. That's what Jonathan does and that's what Justin does. We go through that process of what is it going to cost us to serve? And it's down to seconds. And then we extrapolate that out behind, by how many drive bys we do in a day. So, you know, when I, when you, when you bring up, if you had a 35 gallon, but then people put stuff next to it, my thought process is why not? Let's get a bigger cart so they don't have to get out. Because if they don't have to get out, we're saving time and there's a cost savings. Even if it costs a little more to have a 64 gallon, the cost is going to be less than it is for us having to get out and hand load it. That's
I think, I think Vice Chair, I think Vice Chair Borman was getting at potentially combining compost with the bundled branch type service that Inglewood citizens are used to being able to get, which is not going to fit in any of your carts. Bundled branches, I mean, the, the once or twice a year that someone has to deal with that, it's going to be a pile of bundles of branches and it's not going to fit in any cart. And people are used to having that and dealing with that and having that be included in the services that are around, whether it's, you know, you or other providers. I mean, I know it's included in my service currently. I think it's four, four foot bundled branches and five bags included in my service. Anytime I put it out there, which of course ends up being once or twice a year. When
So that would make a difference if, if you, if the bundled branches you want to pick up is trash, taken as garbage. That's one thing, right? So that would be like a bulk pickup. If you want to compost it, then that's different, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's if we did a green waste service, et cetera. Now we are going to have to wrap this up. We do have hands up, so let's get our last questions in and then we'll have to switch. Member Brinker?
Uh, thank you. A totally different question than for, for our last few minutes. When I was looking at your app on Android and a couple other different provider apps, it looked like your app has some room for improvement based on the reviews. I know people only tend to put bad reviews. But it seemed like a lot of the bad reviews were payment issues and account related issues. Do you think if it was a single hauler contract with Inglewood that we wouldn't have those problems because the, the charge would be on our water and sewer bill?
Yes. So the answer is yes, you wouldn't have that because we would summary bill the city if you're putting it on your utility. And so if someone's having a complaint online, tho, those are subscription people, they're paying, they're paying their own bill to Republic. And so our, our municipal partners, we summary bill the city. And so for them to go on, they can't, they don't have access to pay their bill online because it's through the city and it's through the, the utility. So payment issues on a municipal contract really is non-existent on the app because it's through the city.
Thank you.
Okay, got it. So the app wouldn't have anything about payment, but it would have some way to report missed pickup or whatnot?
Sure. Yeah, you could, you could say you have a damaged wheel on your cart and you needed it exchanged or had a missed pickup or I want to schedule a bulk, all those types of things. It's just invoicing or billing would not be a part of it.
Okay.
I'm assuming it would go through the utility of Inglewood.
Thank you. And you mentioned in your response to our questions that you have a comprehensive municipality reporting. Would it be possible for us to get an example of that?
Sure.
Okay, I would ask you to please get that to Director DeAndrea.
We do, we, we have a pretty robust report that we do every month. I can show you one of Commerce Cities and I can show you something called an F2 report. That's an internal coding of, of an issue report. And Susan has it broken down to missed pickup, escalation, general inquiry, bulk request. I mean, there's a myriad of tabs that just show the, when they called, the address, what the issue was.
Does that also include the stream percentages and recycling rejection?
We have another report that we show a monthly diversion. How many homes were serviced? How many tons of recyclables collected? How many tons of trash were collected? The number of homes serviced, the pounds per set out for trash and recycle and then the diversion rate. So we do that every month.
Yeah, we'd like to see both of those, please.
Sure.
Thank you. And thank you very much for your time, Mr. Petrovich and Susan and Jonathan, thank you. And do we have any final questions? Don't see any hands. So thank you very much. We appreciate it.
For your time, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm not sure what names, we've got four people as attendees. Are they all part of, I guess someone's switching them over now?
Not sure who Hutch is, but if he should be, should I just bring him over in case?
Yeah, he's with Waste Management as well.
Okay, I'll go ahead. Oh, Hutchinson, yeah. There we go.
Hello, I see Mr. Santiago.
Hello, hello.
Are you our main rep or?
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah. It's complicated, but I don't want to get into complications. But yes, I, I'm, I will introduce ourselves and go around the horn. But Hutch is with me. And then we have Cindy Garner, she's with me and Mark Snedeker. So that's our team.
Okay. Hello, thank you for coming and thank you for being here to answer our questions and address us. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So, so hopefully you all aren't too exhausted about talking, talking trash. I mean, that's, it's, you're already hour into it. But if you'd like, we can certainly, I can start by introducing myself and going around or if you want.
Yeah, please do.
Parameters that, sure. So my name is Frank Santiago. I'm the Director of Public Sector Solutions. So our function that interfaces with municipalities throughout, throughout our market area. Our market area consists of the four corners, which is Colorado, Utah, New Mexico and Arizona. And then I will let the other gentleman and woman kind of introduce themselves. But ultimately I just want to thank you for, for, for allowing us to be here. I mean, I, I will say that often, you know, we're left out of the conversation, believe it or not, when it comes to these solid waste issues. And so we, we certainly feel like we're important stakeholders in the process. And so I'm really, I'm really happy to see that you all have engaged the haulers and, and we get an opportunity to kind of speak and talk out there. So thanks for that. And I'll start with Hutch, then Mark and then, and then Cindy. That's the order they are in the, in the picture here.
Thanks, Frank. Scott Hutchings, I go by Hutch, obviously. I am the Director of Government Affairs for the Four Corners area and have been involved in this. I know that you guys at the city of Inglewood have been talking about this for multiple years. And so I've talked to previous city managers and other folks about this. So thanks for having us on and I'll pass it over to my colleague, Mark.
Good evening, everybody. Mark Snedeker, I am the Area Director of Recycling Operations. Myself and my team operate our single stream plants in Colorado. uh, operate our single-stream plants uh, in Colorado, uh, Utah, Arizona, and New Mexico. And I'm here to help with any uh, and questions you may have about recycling.
Hi, everyone. My name is Cindy Garner. I'm the Senior District Manager at Denver South over in Inglewood. So very nice to have you or to be here with you and also representing the operations side of things today.
Great, thank you. All right, let's see.
And, and by the way, we had a call earlier today and Hutch didn't have his hair combed. So he has his hair combed and, and he appears to be showered, so we're happy.
So pretty. I'm so pretty.
Exciting times for all of us.
Yeah, and a collared shirt on. I feel like I'm, I'm dressed for a formal with a collared shirt on these days.
We appreciate it.
All right, so uh, members, please raise your hands for questions. I'm gonna ask one that I'm real curious about. So one thing that a lot of people in Inglewood have, have seen and many have taken advantage of is there were door hangers distributed through Inglewood for waste services for sixteen dollars a month guaranteed rate for two years, and that's serviced by Waste Management. Can you explain all that and what that is and how that works and why?
Sure, sure. It's, it's a, it is a bit confusing. And so, you know, ultimately Waste Services is a third-party broker. And so, um, you know, when you have OMR, which is what we call open-market residential, you know, typically the same, you know, the way we're able to communicate with customers is by, by doing dial-outs and calling and, and really Waste Management doesn't have any on-the-ground function. And so, so uh, a provider like Waste Services, what they do is they go door-to-door and they, they provide the door hangers and the knockers. And so, you know, um, we contract through them or, or broker our services through them. And in turn, those customers belong to them. So it's, it's a weird kind of quasi setup. But at the end of the day, they're a third-party broker. And I, I don't know if I can draw an analogy to another type of scenario like that. I guess, you know, what I've heard recently is a lot of, um, a lot of like Metro Mobile or something like that, where they utilize the Verizon Towers or the AT&T Towers and, and, and they, they're able to provide a lower-cost service. Um, and so that's, that's, we negotiate a rate with Waste Services and then they tell us what territories they're gonna go into. And then ultimately, you know, they're not able to take our customers because we've already had them established and we provide the service for them. So, so hopefully that, that answers the question. I think, I think yes, DirecTV may be another, another uh, another type of uh, service provider that does similar type of things.
Well, is the service that, like the, the service terms that they offer, is that the same that you offer all of your customers? Or is that different for their negotiated setup with you? Do you provide, so like, for instance, we know that Waste Services for that sixteen-dollar fix a month, two years, or twenty-one with um, recycling includes five bags next to the carts and up to four bundled branches four feet long anytime included in the service. Is that what you also offer every other Inglewood customer?
And I, I would say the answer to that is no, because what happens is, is that when we establish kind of the parameters and we negotiate what the services they're gonna be able to, to sell to us. And so we have a contract with Waste Services, and then when that contract is up for negotiations, we negotiate um, what services they're able to provide on our behalf. So, you know, we may change what services we're able to provide. And um, you know, and initially with them, and so as, as things progress, you know, we may change our, our services and those type of things. And, and they're not affect, you know, they, they necessarily won't be affected by that particular change right then and there, but eventually they will. So, you know, that, that type of service is one that we've kind of moved away from, right? This, and I think we call it the ninety-six plus or, or where folks can have, you know, unlimited types of recycling and that type of, uh, I mean, not recycling, but unlimited trash, and they don't have to necessarily have a ninety-six gallon container. And so those type of things may have been something that Waste Services was able to offer on our behalf. But, you know, as the contract renews, then they'll, they'll likely not be able to provide that. And it's, and it's geographic-based. So, you know, I think they, they do some of our brokering and like Estes Park and some of the other places. Well, that's different than what they're gonna be able to do in Inglewood, right? So, so we take, geographically, we identify areas where we don't have the means to go approach those customers door-to-door. And then we establish, you know, hey, what, what services can, can, can you offer or are you gonna offer on our behalf? And then here's the price. The reason that they're able to provide a lower price is because we don't actually have direct contact with that customer, believe it or not. So, other than picking up the trash, when that customer calls, they're talked to a Waste Services person. When uh, the billing, the billing doesn't come from Waste Management, it comes from Waste Services. So, you know, from our standpoint, it is a uh, they're able to have a lower rate typically because, you know, we are not doing the billing and we're not providing the customer service. So hopefully that makes sense.
So that would be similar to, I mean, a municipality doing a bulk deal with you would potentially then be able to do a better deal than what Waste Services got.
Well, you would, you would, you would think so, but it.
Very competitive. Our, our business, believe it or not, is super competitive. And so sure, if you go single hauler, you can get better rates. But yeah, that's why we, that's why we use these brokers, because we're trying to get into areas where we know that we need some help. We need kind of some extra help to get competitive.
I, I will say this, thank you, thank you, Hutch. But you know, um, Mr. Green, I, I think ultimately, it really depends on what you put in there, right? What menu options are you? It's almost like a buffet. So you can come to Waste Management and you can, you can select a whole bunch of, of things per se. And, you know, your rate's gonna change depending on, um, you know, what items you select. And so ultimately, when you look at Waste Services, you know, they're typically not asking for any type of bulky item pickup. It's just, you know, just based on trash. Um, so there's a variety of things. And so, you know, it's difficult to answer that question without comparing exactly what is what. Um, and then there's a variety of other, other scenarios that are involved in that as well, so.
Thank you. Number Brown?
Good evening. Um, nice to have you here, but I have a couple of, well, I have a question for you. About a couple of months ago, on Nextdoor, there was a picture taken about how a woman had kept trying to get her garbage picked up. And it was two weeks and Waste Management was her trash hauler. And she complained about that you weren't coming to pick up her trash. And she was experiencing rodents near her house. And then along with her picture, there were many detrimental um, statements made about your company that you were the most expensive and that you were the hardest ones to get a hold of for when you missed trash pickup. So I, I guess what I'm asking is, are we gonna have that same problem whereas these other people have had in Inglewood? Because they have switched to other companies. And that you are also the most expensive. So I guess I'm just trying to get a handle here on what you're going to do to, to fix that.
Well, I, I don't know if I have an answer for you in that particular scenario. And unfortunately, I, I've, you know, the, the folks that I have on the phone, we're certainly prepared to answer a lot of questions. We may not have the answer to every question. I think, you know, ultimately, when it comes to that person's particular situation, um, it sounds like that was an unfortunate scenario. I will say that I, I, I will put our service up against anybody's service. I feel like we are, you know, and we have the metrics to, to demonstrate our effectiveness. And sure, there are times where, where we miss and there are times where we don't, you know, service the customer to, you know, to their expectations. But ultimately, I think in the City of Inglewood, the majority of residents choose Waste Management. And so if there was, you know, ultimately, if there was a scenario where that was the case, where the vast majority of residents weren't getting the service quality, then ultimately, I think we would be, we would be lagging in terms of the number of residents that we have. So I, I mean, it's, it's relatively close in terms of, of, of how many single-family homes. So, you know, I, I, I think it's an unfortunate situation, um, member Brown. And I don't know the exact specifics around that particular problem. And I, we can certainly try to take a look and see what that's, that's about. But I will say that, you know, more often than not, we are not the lowest hauler. I mean, we, we, we typically are not. And I, and I think we, the things that we invested uh, from a sustainability perspective, from a technology perspective, from our safety perspective, we can put that up against anyone. Sure, you know, there, there, there are service providers out there that, you know, aren't investing in sustainability, aren't investing in their folks the way we are, aren't doing the things that we do in terms of recycling. And, and so there's a variety of metrics that are out there that cause us to be the, the, the highest uh, price out there. But, you know, we are, we are quite often not the cheapest. That's, that's for sure.
Member Hubka?
Yeah, I have a question along those lines. Um, good evening and thanks for, for coming to our, our meeting. I'll tell you, we did put out that initial RFP and only two companies, you're one of them, responded to the RFP. So what, we went back to the drawing board to figure out, how do we get more competitors and also get that price down? Because there wasn't um, an incentive for our Inglewood residents to want to switch from their current provider to a, a, a uni- a unified hauler. Um, we're wondering, so we're exploring different ways of bringing the cost down while trying to get uh, the service people are used to. Along those lines, we're gonna put out a contract with a longer term uh, in thinking that there is a higher total contract value. Would you say that um, Waste Management could offer a lower price with a longer contract term?
Um, I, I certainly think that's an important piece to it, right? That's, if, if you, if you think about what, what is built into the, the price, I mean, you know, certainly there, there's a variety of factors. And you probably only had two um, service providers, you know, uh, respond to the RFP because there is, it, it's a significant capital investment for any organization to, to take on a, an entire city uh, and provide services to. And so, you know, that's number one. And then of course, you know, the longer-term contract, that variable in itself does provide for, you know, a reduction in rate, primarily because, you know, we're a for-profit organization and ultimately we have to depreciate those assets over a particular period of time. And so, you know, when you establish that uh, you have a five-year contract, and at the end of those five years, the city can, you know, unilaterally decide to keep you or not keep you. You've invested millions and millions of dollars into providing services. So you have to take and depreciate the assets invested over that, you know, that five-year period versus a ten-year period. And so, you know, um, I, that is a factor. But I, I will say that there's so many other factors that go into the pricing model that, that have impacts into, in terms of what the price is. And I know that's, it's a bit frustrating because you're, on the one hand, you're saying, well, you know, my service, I only pay sixteen dollars a month. And yet, you know, here's Waste Management comes with all these, you know, with an RFP and we, we're leveraging the buying power of the city, and yet our service isn't lower. Why is that? And typically what you find is, you know, those scenarios where you have an abbreviated contract, we're trying to depreciate, you know, that, that investment initially over a small period of time. And then on top of that, there's also services that are added to it. And, you know, whether it be, um, you know, uh, pay-as-you-throw and having multiple containers and, and, you know, the, the number of pickups required and how you are operating. And I think from our standpoint, the most difficult thing to overcome in Inglewood is, you know, we have essentially two uh, systems, right? We have a system that's dedicated to the alleys and then a system dedicated to the streets. And so, you know, essentially you have, um, I think Cindy, Cindy mentioned, there's, there could, there could be a potential of us driving, you know, down a street four times, right? I mean, driving through a neighborhood and servicing one customer four times, which is, you know, one through the alley to get the trash, one through the, you know, um, through the front to get the recycling. And then, you know, here we are coming back again. So it's, it's that, that kind of, um, that scenario is what makes it the most difficult at times to, to, um, to service communities like Inglewood and, and what drives the price up. And so I, I will say that it's, you have to look at the entire picture and there's a lot of variables that, that could be mixed in there that can, that can raise the price.
Thank you.
Uh, member Quanabe?
Thank you. Welcome to you. I extend my welcomes as well this evening. Um, so trash service is a surprisingly emotionally charged topic. It's crazy. I would never have thought that coming into this, right? Um, and, and I'm gonna dovetail off of what Marcy was saying about not just a specific person's uh, errors that were happening, but hopefully you guys can give us a sense of how many service calls you guys are getting that are directly related to mistakes by your company. And are there trends up and down over year, over year that are about, or they're about the same every year? And I guess the last thing is if, if the, if you do provide communities' metrics, if we could get a sample of that as well.
Yeah, let me start here just a little bit, council member. I will tell you that I spent twenty years in politics, working for a governor, a congressman, and I have never seen people more fired up when you start talking about their trash service. I, I jokingly call it like the Third Amendment. It's free speech to bear arms and pick who picks up your trash, right? And so it is really a charged topic. Um, and we do watch this stuff. Frank can tell you about the actual customer metrics or Cindy can. But yeah, it, it is fascinating how engaged people are with who comes to pick their trash and recycling.
Here, here.
Yeah, so, so and, and I'll, you know, Cindy can chime in there to talk about all the, potentially all the various metrics that, 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 um, you know, um, they are monitoring, but service quality is at the very top of it, right? And so as I stated earlier, I mean, there are times where, you know, we, we fall short. And, um, but overall, over the course of a, a period of time, I, I, I would say there's nobody providing better service uh, in the metro area than, than Waste Management. We have the metrics that, that can demonstrate that. Um, and, and we do make, you know, um, we make decisions that, that often aren't, you know, um, the most, you know, people don't love. Like recently in Denver, we decided that we weren't gonna service, you know, and I think Inglewood was part of that. And, 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 and we took safety was the, the most important thing. And so, you know, we do make decisions at times that aren't the most popular, but we, we certainly want to act within the best interests of our people and, you know, the community at large. And so Cindy, you wanna talk about some of the metrics and, 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 and how they relate to our folks on the ground?
Sure. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, fantastic. So yes, we are graded on quality of services. Frank mentioned, um, we do track commercially, uh, residentially and roll-off. Uh, for our commercial department, our goal is uh, point eight oh or less. So um, for every hauler call that our drivers are doing that goes against our quality of service. Uh, so we do have a lot of processes in place that if a driver does hauler call, that they contact dispatch first before they leave that customer. Uh, dispatch will try to get ahold of the customer before the driver can leave. Uh, for residential, it's a two-point-oh. And just, you know, to piggyback kind of on what Frank was talking about with the snow, uh, it's a decision that we take very seriously. Uh, it affects a lot of people, including our, our own staff and our own drivers. Um, but safety is, is paramount in those situations. And while the main roads might have looked fantastic, uh, as you know, so you get back into some of the neighborhoods that have cul-de-sacs and it's very difficult to get in and out of those uh, particular neighborhoods with the, a truck and two feet of snow on the ground. So um, I think the communication piece that Waste Management can offer to our customers, uh, when we do have delays, uh, we send out a, a call basically or an email to uh, the account owner uh, to explain the situation and when we, we will be back.
Yeah, and uh, member Quanabe, I think the, the other thing you had mentioned is reporting. So certainly, you know, we can, we can send you some reporting that we have. Um, in addition to the, the items that Cindy was talking about, we do do, um, we do surveys on our customers. So on a monthly basis, we survey the community over and over again. Uh, we, we do it through a third-party organization, random samples. We hear direct back from our customer. And that's an important piece of, 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 of how we improve our service. And again, I, I wish there wasn't, and, and wish we could service a hundred percent of the customers and, and provide a hundred percent satisfaction. But often, you know, we, we do have, we do have some issues. It's an industrial process, you know, and, and, and we have trucks that break down and we have a variety of things that can happen. Um, you know, that can cause customer satisfaction. But I will say, there hasn't been a community that we left that we haven't heard back and said, wow, we really do miss Waste Management. And again, I, I'll say it again, and I've said it multiple times, but I will put our service up against anybody's out there.
Are, are you seeing those net promoter scores going up then, year over year with those, those customer surveys?
So I'll speak to that, Frank, if you don't mind.
Sure.
So year over year for Denver South, I can't speak for, for Waste Management, um, as all, as a company or as a country. But uh, for Denver South, yes, we are seeing those go, go up. So it's a scale of one to ten. Um, again, So it's a scale of one to 10. Um, again, like Frank said, there's multiple questions on that survey that the customer can answer. Um, I'm proud to say that we continuously score high on driver friendliness um, as well as safety. And I think, you know, even in my own neighborhood, um, I, I live University and Orchard and I see, you know, probably four or five different kind of trucks come down my streets on any different day because we're not in HOA. And just the difference in, um, the trucks and the driver's safety, um, it's, it's palpable. And, uh, and I'm, I'm proud of that with our drivers that, you know, we do provide the best customer service that, that we can every single day.
That's, that's really impressive. Would you happen to know the percentage of your NPS?
My, my, what? I'm sorry?
Your net promoter score? Apologies.
Uh, eight point six three right now just for Denver South. And again, that's on a scale of one to 10.
Wow. Awesome. Thank you.
And, uh, you can imagine that, uh, it may, because it fluctuates month to month and, and you can, you can look, you can extrapolate the annual, but you know, last, last couple of weeks has been pretty hard on us because we decided not to pick up.
Uh, Ms. Garner, you meant, I didn't quite understand what the numbers you said earlier were about point eight zero and two point oh for residential. Could you just explain what those mean?
Sure. So for every 2,500 customers, our threshold for commercial would be a point eight zero to meet um, our internal goals. So we tried to, uh, so again, 2,500 customers for, for waste management, city of Inglewood, we probably have, Frankie probably knows the number better than I do. I would say over a hundred thousand customers that we service on a monthly basis. And so that number is, that's the metric that we um, try to fall below is that point eight zero.
But what exactly does that mean? What do you, how, explain the whole measurement? Like, I still don't understand what it means.
Okay, sure. So if you go to a customer and for some reason the container is blocked and we can't service it, then we call into our dispatch center, try to get dispatched to call the customer to see if they can move that. If they can't get ahold of the customer, then that becomes our hauler call and that goes against that number, that point eight oh.
Okay. So it's a measurement of whether you successfully hauled for a customer.
Correct. That's a much simpler way to put it. Thank you.
Across all of them. Okay. And when you say obstructed, you mean that's where it's like a curbside pickup and there's cars too close to it or something? Is that the type of thing you're talking about?
So for commercial, uh, could be a number of things. It could be cars parked in front of it. Um, it could be, um, a, a gate locked that we don't have a key for, that the customer supplies the key for. Um, and that's just, you know, honestly, that's just a simple, uh, fix for us to, to talk with the customer and either get a key or provide them with a waste management lock.
Sure. Let's stick to residential because we're not considering including commercial in our municipal.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry about that.
That's okay. So what would it mean?
Absolutely. So the same situation with, uh, cars in front of containers, uh, that we couldn't get to or potentially, you know, recently with a snowstorm, uh, going up a small hill that we can't come back down safely. We'd have to haul or call those um, customers and then come back and get them the next day.
Okay.
And just to, just to make that clear, when we talk about the, the numbers, it's not necessarily residents that were services and their number of containers and then the number of lifts associated with the containers. And when you talk about a hundred thousand, it's, you know, nine thousand customers, they have trash recycling. And so that's, you know, eight, it's potentially 18,000 lifts that we can do in a week. And so you get a pretty distinct number. It's like, so when you start about point eight, that means like, you, you know, when you look at it, it's 99 point, you know, whatever percent times the number of lifts. So it's, it's, it's more digestible than you think, then, then, then we're probably making it sound, but ultimately it would be, you know, out of the hundred thousand potential lifts that we could have had, we were servicing 99.8%. And we're typically about the 99.8% or 99% range when it comes to our residential services. So every time we have an opportunity to lift, did we lift and did we service that customer? And so, you know, if a customer calls and says, you didn't get my trash, that counts against that number. Um, you know, and so that's, that's typically how we evaluate.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Chair Borman?
Yeah, I'm actually want to go off topic a little bit to actually some recycling related information. It does seem like you guys actually have, you know, one of the better recycling facilities and a pretty decent percentages in terms of rejection. But I was looking at kind of, um, some of your specifics in your um, replies where it was talking about that you guys want to do an education program and also that you have found that enforcement also has a great impact on recycling rates. And I don't know what you guys were talking about in terms of enforcement. Could you just elaborate on the enforcement part?
I'll take that one, Frank. Sure. I got it. Good afternoon or good evening, Councilman Borman. So what it is, the, uh, the key to, you know, a strong cycling program. And this is something we talked about with communities all over the, the country. It's really, it's education. So what really belongs in the program? You know, is it, you know, HD bottles, paper, you know, what types of plastics are in there, cardboard? You know, so the education is really the cornerstone of it. So that's one thing that we do when we first start out a program with anybody is we define what's, is it going to be limited to really the big ten? You know, is glass included? Is not. And the reason that we put enforcement in there is because recycling and is really, I, I call it, it's the, the 90, 10 or the 80, 20 rule. Because you're going to get 80% or 90% of your people that are hardcore recyclers that really, really want to do a good job. They're going to make sure their material's not bagged. They're going to make sure they're not putting bags of garbage in there. Make sure there's no yard waste and they're going to make sure they're in there. The problem comes with the programs where you start real, seeing really high contamination rates is, is when you don't have some mechanism to either tag the repeater fenders that are throwing garbage into the recyclables that are bringing down and increasing costs of the programs for the rest of the community. So enforcement and being able to go back after those folks that aren't using the program correctly. And if they're not interested in using the service, force them to use another garbage can or push them into another option. Don't keep putting it into the recycling stream. Because a good clean recycling program, and I'm happy to say that our municipal customers in Colorado, we've been able to get our recycling contamination rate down to almost, it's under 12% in our Franklin Street Merck, which is world-class. That's better than any place in California. It's one of the best programs, uh, in the entire country in terms of residual. But that's been done with a cornerstone investment of time and getting everybody on the exact same page about what goes in that blue container. And then what are we going to do to make sure that everybody's on the same page? That's the really beneficial thing of having a single hauler is because our program, we can audit it down by routes. One of the cornerstones of our program is, is we audit the material that's coming into our facility because that's how we actually charge back and how we charge to customers. We charge so much for processing and if your stream value is super clean, got a lot of aluminum cans into it, a lot of milk jugs, that builds a lot of value into the program and it helps lower the cost to the entire community. And we have those audits, we do that on a transparent basis. And then as we dug deeper into the program, we actually rotate that through. So we can tell you which routes in the city are your cleanest or hey, this is a problem area that we have. And we'll work with our municipal partners, yourselves, your, your local team about how do we target those areas? Is it education? You know, what do we need to do to improve it? But we want to give you a visible into the process and transparency onto where your materials are going. Because that's what really we're here to do is we're your experts and we're your resource to build a really strong program.
Yeah, this also kind of dovetails into that same sort of thing is I was reading here that you guys are developing a technology to kind of monitor what actually comes out of each individual person's recycling container. Is that in the works or is this something that we're talking, you know, 25 years away or five years away or something like that?
Yeah, thank you, member Borman, because that, that's exactly where I was going. So I, I appreciate the question. And ultimately, I think enforcement is is probably, you know, not the friendliest, kindest word, but, but certainly education always has to be a component. And then there has to be some other component that, you know, it has an accountability piece. And so, you know, that's where it comes from. And some municipalities choose that accountability piece to be, you know, uh, citizen groups that go out and, and, and take a look at, um, you know, folks' containers and see, see what's going on and is able to deliver them a particular message. So, so that can look a variety of ways. It doesn't have to be enforcement officers going out and, and, uh, you know, ticketing folks. Um, so transitioning from that part, I, I think we, we, we've found that if you have that kind of two-pronged approach, you're going to get the most out of your recycling program. Um, but the second component, the one that you were asking the follow-up question to technology, we actually call that smart truck and, um, it's a scenario where, um, we, we, we want to be cautious about how much information we provide because it's in the early stages of it. But I'm happy to report that, um, it was first deployed, uh, in California and now it's the second deployment phase is coming to our market area. So we actually have that equipment on trucks in Utah and, um, Arizona and certainly Colorado um, is, is and can be, you know, a, a place where we put them. So just to give you an idea, it's basically, uh, provides visual verification as to, you know, what is coming out, out of the cart. And then ultimately, um, there is resources that we utilize to see if there's contamination in that particular uh, container. And then we're able to communicate, um, to the customer directly via email or a letter that says, hey, we saw this contamination in there. This is why it's important to not do that. And, you know, here you go. And then, you know, the second part of that is how the municipality would like to, you know, um, do, do you, after a few warnings, do you provide any type of, you know, fee associated with that? Because ultimately folks that aren't recycling properly and contaminating and providing contamination in their containers raise the cost to the community at large, right? And so when you have that, it's really, and when you put trash in your recycling container, it's becomes the most expensive trash, uh, ever, right? Because it has to go on the recycling truck, then it has to go to our facility, has to get processed. That trash goes into, you know, the, the various bin where it needs to go to, and then it needs to be removed from that facility and then taken to a landfill somewhere to get landfill. So you can imagine that's an expensive ride. So, you know, um, ensuring and, and educating, um, you know, customers about what they're doing or constituents about what they're putting in their recycling bin ultimately has an impact of lowering the cost for, for the community at large. And so that's, that's typically why you see with these programs, um, we do, you know, there is an opportunity to charge some fees associated with the contamination that you put in it. That's not the, that's not the primary driver. The primary driver is, um, cleaning up the stream. And what we saw in, um, California was really significant changes in behavior, um, that we couldn't get from just an education program.
Excellent.
I swear this is the last, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, Vice Chair Borman.
Question. I, I was wondering, I know you guys have the transfer station down there and kind of whatever, Western Inglewood. Do you guys also use that as your transfer location for recycled materials or is that only for landfill materials? Because I was just kind of looking at the address for your MIR facility up there in North Denver and just wondering if you guys are having to run the trucks back and forth between the two or if it's something that goes through the transfer station as well?
So we do use, uh, our South Metro Transfer Station for recycling as well because the same laws for trash and recycling apply. It's better to move larger quantities in a consolidated manner than it is to put more trucks that are carrying a couple of tons on the street and driving all the way up to the Franklin Street Merck. So it is there that is segregated. We segregate it into our residential, our commercial, single-stream programs, and then also resident, uh, trash is in another part of the building.
Thank you.
And member Mormon, just to, one, one other caveat to the, the technology. The technology is, is here and, uh, we're utilizing it, we're developing it. Um, and then I will just say it doesn't work on rear-load trucks, which is any truck that is, is, uh, is being, you know, where they have folks on the back manually picking up the trash because it is based on, you know, um, use of cameras and, and technology that way. So just wanted to clarify that. And I think for the most part, recycling in Inglewood is done on the street. So I, I think that's a, that's a good.
Our, our RFP is going to require it on both. So I mean, that's what's currently, and, and go ahead, uh, member Brinker?
A, a couple totally different questions if we can go in different directions. Um, I, one, the first one I want to ask is about kind of price increases year over year. Um, can you tell us about with your regular residential customers and with your municipal single hauler contracts? How much does the price increase each year on average? And where, where, why I'm wondering this is because we spent a, a whole long meeting trying to figure out and puzzle through different, um, consumer price index and, um, and so forth to try to figure out what would be reasonable to put in our RFP. And I, what we laid it on and voted on is, uh, no price increases for the first two years. And then a maximum total increase of 5% for a five-year contract, 7% for a seven-year contractor, 10% for a 10-year contract. And I wonder if you could just comment on all of that in general.
Um, member Brown, uh, member Brinker, thank you for the question and I'll turn that over to Hutch. No, I'm just kidding. He's, he's a, he doesn't deal with the pricing. So that's a, it's a bit of a he was, he was, he was shocked. So, so the, the price increase, to answer the first part of your question, between five and eight percent is what we typically, what the price increase has been for OMR customers, um, that open market customers. Um, I will say that when you have municipal accounts, the price increase is typically, um, you know, less because it's negotiated in advance, right? And so sometimes the price increase that, that, um, an open market customer is subject to is different than, um, what a municipal customer is ultimately because that scale can move with what's happening, uh, at that particular site or in, in the market. So for example, if there's something that, you know, a couple of years ago, there was a, the, the recycle industry flipped on its head. And so ultimately, open market customers are subject to those kind of increases sooner than a municipal, uh, you know, a, a, a municipal customer that, that has a negotiated agreement. And that's because of that agreement, right? So in the, you, you set those parameters early on. And so ultimately, you know, that's, that's, um, that's typically what happens. And now we use uh, CPI and there's, the Bureau of Labor Statistics has a, um, has a, has a, um, index that is specific to water sewer trash. And then there's a sub-index that's garbage and trash. And so when you look at that index, you can see that it, you know, there's, there's some variability, some ups and downs, but ultimately it's there to measure the, the change in price and that, that particular index over the course of the last three to four years, and I can provide that data to you all. Um, and maybe you've, you've, you've looked at it already. Sounds like you've, you've done some research, but ultimately, you know, that it has outpaced the CPI. So that's just what's happening from a Bureau of Labor Statistics across the country. When you look at what's happening in Colorado, you know, it's, it's, it's probably, there's probably even more pressure in terms of a price increase. And going back to member Green's comment earlier is that why does the price seem to be higher, you know, than what I can get on my own? I will say that stipulating things like holding price for the first two years means that haulers in particular are going to, to have to build in some of those costs upfront. And I'm just being completely transparent with you all. So when you don't allow for a year-over-year price increase, typically what happens is you have to build in that price increase to year one, year two. And so it, it, when you, when you, you know, that I, I think the best, easiest, sometimes things is to have a fixed percentage, right? So that way that the municipality can budget and they know what's upcoming and, you know, you know, so if you had a fixed 3% or a fixed 4% or something like that, that's reasonable. That's tracking along what a garbage and trash index is, you know, I, I think that sometimes is the best look. Um, you know, or you use a, you use a index that's relatable to our industry. I mean, I, I don't think, I, I think what happens often is that when you use a CPI or a general index and say, okay, well, the, you know, the consumer price index is, you know, 1.2%, um, so that's what we want to give the trash company. Well, that's not really correlated to what we do in our industry. And so ultimately, I think, you know, that has a negative impact on municipalities. And, and what I mean by that is that if you hold prices or you don't allow for PIs or you, you limit the price indexes, ultimately at some point there's going to have to be a correction. And, and that correction typically comes when you're transitioning to a new contract or the, the, uh, the hauler will come back and ask for, you know, an extraordinary rating increase. Um, so the, the, the pricing portion of it is, is, is complicated, um, for sure. I do think there's a definite benefit um, to the overall constituent when you have a contract because you can establish some of those parameters. It's just a matter of, of, of thinking it through and, and, uh, and, and going through that process. So hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you. That was, that was helpful. Um, so for the open market. So for the open market customers, you said it's typically five to eight percent reflective of market forces and unforeseen market events and so forth. And for municipal contracts, it's a fixed or at least fixed to a CPI or sub-sub-sub-index of the CPI. And perhaps has a little bit more of a lag to the reflecting that those market forces, right?
Yeah, I, I, I think that's a fair assessment. I, I think ultimately, a hauler and a municipality will negotiate what that price increase is going to be. And I, and I would say that the, you know, probably the fairest scenario is to tie it to an index like, you know, the, the, the garbage and trash or the water sewer trash. But I will say, you know, that there are market conditions, you know, in particular, like in Colorado. You know, I, I think Cindy can talk to our labor costs have increased over the last, you know, two to three years by upwards of, you know, 28, 30%, right? Because, and they just gave their, their drivers another $3 increase because we're having a heck of a time keeping people behind the wheel. And the quality of, of driver that we require is, is, is probably vastly different than anybody else does. But, you know, I think, I think ultimately, the way you summarize that, member Brinker was, was correct. And ultimately, you can negotiate it upfront, but I think by putting a fair price increase, you level things out over the course of time. Saying that you're not going to have any price increase is, is, is problematic. And it always comes to some resolution that isn't, you know, in the best interest of the municipality.
Okay, yep, that, that makes sense. So having our, kind of our two-year fixed price, you said, might result in a slightly higher cost because you have to add that in. And what about how we came to the conclusion of a up to a, what averages out to a 1% per year over the length of the contract?
Yeah, I think, I think ultimately, that's going to, that's going, that's going to, that's going to make, that's going to put haulers in a position where they're going to build that into the price upfront, right? Because if you, if you say, okay, over the course of 10 years, you're going to get a total of 10%, that's 1% each year. And we know that based on the Bureau of Labor Statistics, we know based on what's happening at our, our local hauling sites, our, our price increase is increasing, you know, far above that, right? You know, I think the, the garbage and trash is, is averaging between four and six percent. And then the, the, the water sewer trash is about 3.6%. So, you know, from, from day one of that contract, you're asking a hauler, if you stick with 1% each year, to take a decline in, 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 in their, in their revenue and, and what their, their return to their shareowners is year over year over year. And so what typically you're going to see is that they're going to build that in, into the rate. So if you want a lower rate, then, you know, ultimately, I think if you have a 3% fixed over the course of time, because that's reflective of what's happening in our industry, you, you're probably going to be better served and you're probably going to have a lower rate initially.
Okay, thank you. Yep, that was helpful. And my other question is also to- totally different. We were also exploring the extent to which we could include multifamily properties. And we are familiar with the state law that can only be up to, we could only include multifamily properties that are up to seven units. I don't know that if we came to a conclusion of whether we should include those properties of up to seven units. Do you have any examples from your other municipalities that you work with of either including those or excluding those? I think we, we were originally only looking at single-family duplex and triplex. So I think the question is if we should recommend including multifamily units that have four, five, six, and seven units in them.
Um, I, I, I certainly, I think in most of the municipalities, they stick with, with statute, whatever the, whatever the state statute is. And believe it or not, every state that we operate in has a similar statute, whether that number is seven or if it's six or if it's eight. I mean, that, that varies, but for the most part, those are included in the, in the solid waste program that the municipality puts out. I think it's just, you know, when you get to those seven, perhaps there's a scenario where a commercial container will probably better serve that community potentially. And so, you know, but in the duplex and the triplex, if they have a means to, to store a cart and put a cart, then, then that, that makes sense. But there's nothing that says you can't, you know, require a, you know, a multifamily dwelling to have recycling, if that's the intent. If the spirit of, of, of endeavoring down that path is to get those folks the ability to recycle and to play into the sustainability space, then certainly I think the municipality has a means to do that. But to, to answer that question, I think for the most part, it, the line is drawn at the state statute. And so if it's seven, then I would include seven. I would say that, you know, there's a potential to have those, you know, maybe seven, if they're, the way they're structured, perhaps, you know, they may push back and say, wait a minute. I think we're, we're not going to be able to serve our residents here, you know, in a means that is going to be, you know, appropriate for them. And so we would like to have commercial containers. And sure, we'll have a recycled container if that's what you're, you're requiring us to do. But it is complex, but I think, well, you know, those duplexes and triplexes, those are pretty, pretty simple solutions. I think when you get to the fourplex, fiveplex, you know, and, and you, that makes it more difficult.
And what I would say is that other cities, Arvada, Golden, where I am, Lakewood, when they look at this, the best that you can do through ordinance is really to have an opt-in for HOAs. And it's very hard because you can't enforce it. Once again, an HOA can get a better price if there's a lot of units in that HOA. And this is just, it's really in-state statute. And it's, it's tough for individual cities to go after and try and kind of modify and do this on your own.
Yeah, we recognize that we don't have the ability to go over seven units. So we're just wondering if it made sense to try to fill that gap between the, up to three, we were already considering and the, to seven, which there aren't even that many in Inglewood.
Yeah, Carson, like for Collins, it's been interesting that, you know, they're really trying to get their diversion rate up. So they went away from multifamily and then went to like commercial properties for composting. And they started with grocery stores and restaurants. So there's, there's a lot of different ways to come after this. But to try and get those big apartment buildings or multifamily units, it's very tough. It's just a tough road to hoe.
Yeah, and, and there may be something, there may be something that you can do to figure out how those multifamily, you know, above six or whatever that number is, are getting serviced currently. And those that are having commercial, you know, there's a potential, and I know that it's probably too late in the game. But, you know, I've seen in RFPs where they've established, and I think Commerce City is one of them, where they've established that, you know, they have these multifamily, they have a list of them. They ask the owners, you know, how they're currently being serviced, and then they, they ask for a rate for that. So they, they can include it in the, in the RFP process. And, you know, they require them to have a commercial container and a recycled container. And because there are, there are those units that want to be serviced from a commercial location, right? If you have, you know, two units above, you know, two, where are you putting the, there are those folks' trashcans? And so there is those limitations around that.
It felt like City passed an ordinance a few years ago that is kind of the gold standard. And what it was, was any new multifamily building, you've got to have space for a recycling container. It, it was in all of the planning department documents, right? So if you're going to build something new, starting on this date, there has to at least be space for recycling. And that's what a lot of other cities out here in the states that we cover have kind of gone after.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, so we can do our best to encourage larger multifamily buildings, but we're really trying to figure out the, the buildings that are either four units, five units, six units, or seven units. And it sounds like you're saying how they're built, it determines whether they use separate bins like a household would, or whether they use a commercial dumpster type. And if we do want to include them to the highest degree possible in such a program in order to get the benefits both of higher recycling and of bulk pricing, how do we structure such an RFP, given that some of them would have commercial-sized dumpsters? We've mostly been looking at, you know, 96-gallon, 32-gallon type of things.
Yeah, I, I think, I think, you know, member Brinker, it, it just, you know, and I, I think member Green alluded to it. It's really determining how many, you know, what is that, the portion of the population that we're talking about, right? And if it's, if it's 10 locations, then ultimately you can, what I've seen done is you can, you can list those 10, 10 locations and be able to say, okay, you know, pull them, figure out what works best, what solution works best for them. Because you certainly don't want to, you know, provide them with a solution that doesn't work for that particular property, right? That, that, you know, and all of a sudden they go from having two commercial containers, one, you know, commercial, one recycle. And, you know, and now they have, you know, 20 carts and they don't know where to put those carts. So I think, you know, from my perspective, my opinion, you would just kind of need to understand how many of those units are out there and then also understand what their current service, service levels are. And then if you wanted to bid that in the RFP, ultimately, you could just establish that we have these 10 locations and we need pricing for commercial, commercial containers and commercial recycling. I mean, that's, that's, yeah, that makes it simple and you'll get a price.
Okay, gotcha.
Uh, one thing we've heard differing responses to is how including pay-as-you-throw versus fixed, single, large carts would affect the overall. One hauler told us that overall cost is better if it's single-sized carts. Another told us it would kind of even out across. You know, if we did do pay-as-you-throw that supported different sized carts, where do you guys stand on that? What is, what would be our best deal?
Well, I mean, for, for, you know, just to be completely honest and transparent, I mean, we have 9,000, you know, plus trash containers out there, right? So if you tell us that we're going to have to take those containers off the street and put, you know, 32 or 64, I mean, there's a cost associated with doing that. I think over the term, over the long term, I think, you know, that, that, that other hauler is probably correct and that, that cost is minimized, you know, to a certain degree. But initially, you know, there would be a high cost. I think there's, there's pros and cons to the pay-as-you-throw methodology. And I think it really, it really depends on what you're trying to achieve and what the spirit of, of going into that program is. If you're looking to, you know, increase diversion, I, I don't think that cart system is going to be the best answer. I think there's other answers in the way of education and the new technologies that are being developed and the auditing that Mark talked about. If you're looking for opportunities to reduce, you know, and, and right-size the container for that individual because they're a low, you know, they produce a low volume of trash, like the, you know, seniors or, or, or other types of folks, then you can probably do that as well. We've seen it where we have municipal contracts where, you know, seniors are able to get a 64-gallon container. Because typically their households don't have more than two people in it or one person. And so, you know, they like having the smaller container. But anytime you have, if you're asking a hauler to increase their inventory and have three types of containers, you know, there's going to be a cost associated with that. But ultimately, if you're going to a pay-as-you-throw methodology, you know, to, to just for the benefits of recycling, I think, you know, often what you find is that folks will look at the price and say, I want the cheapest container. Then they get a 32-gallon or 64-gallon, and then they have trash that they need to either put in their, you know, neighbor's containers or put into their recycled container. And so it can have an adverse effect on what you're trying to achieve.
That makes sense. I'd like to ask some questions about customer service. In your response, you, you said that you do offer an online form that converts to an email to the digital team. One thing that, that's important to our citizens that there is that they're not stuck waiting on phone lines or waiting for chat. Does this mean that anything someone would need to be able, would need to contact you for, would be able to do so without having to wait real-time for a response? They could submit something through this form? And then it's on you guys to get back to them and take care of it?
Yeah, that, that's, that's certainly, yes. And, and I will apologize in advance. I didn't, I thought about that right when we were getting on the calls, like dang it, I didn't get my customer experience person to be on here because she could answer that question more directly. But, yeah, when I talk to her, that's, that's the methodology. So ultimately, you know, they can, they can leave, they fill out a form and then it becomes an email. And so we have a digital team that, you know, will answer the chat and then also answer, you know, the, the means as we, as we stated there. In addition, we have invested, I think, one of our largest investments that we've made in 2020 and moving into 2021 is our customer service digitalization experience. And so we, we recognize as an organization that people want to interact with, you know, their providers the same way they do with Uber and the same way they do with, you know, some of the other organizations out there that make it very simple in an app. And so that is, that is where we're moving as an organization as well. We recognize that, you know, the way folks now interact with their providers is vastly different than, you know, calling on the phone or, you know, you know, even a chat for the most part. They want to be able to go online, see what the status of their container is, or go, or be able to change their service and do all those things so that they can get it done in that moment versus having to add a whole layer of, you know.
Waiting, no waiting. Waiting is the problem. And in fact, your, your statement says your current maximum wait time is 2 minutes 51 seconds. We unfortunately just had to lose a member. He and his wife had to move into a bigger house. And so our last meeting was his last meeting with us. And they reported to us that their experience with waste management in canceling their service was pretty bad. I'm going to read what was written to us. First, I tried to cancel our trash recycling service online and the website was down. Then when I finally got online, all I could find was a number to call to cancel. So I called and the first time I was on hold for 45 minutes. And after someone finally picked up, I got disconnected, issue on waste management's end. I tried to call again twice after that and was on hold for 30 minutes before my kid woke up from his nap and I had to give up. I finally got through to someone on my fourth time calling and after canceling was told we'd be billed $175, which apparently includes a trash barrel removal from our curbside fee and cleaning fee. So seeing that your written response says your current maximum wait time is 2 minutes 51 seconds. And this person who was on our, this is the wife of someone who was just on our committee, went through a 45-minute failed call, another 30-minute failed call, and then another time. Do you want to respond?
Yeah, I mean, you know, cer- certainly, I, I, I can appreciate that. And if you give us their name, number, we can, we can, we can drill down to exactly what happened and why that happened. And, and, you know, certainly if they're customers of ours, we can, we can figure it out. But I will tell you that that's the app. And we monitor this thing in a million different ways in terms of, you know, the, you know, when, when the customer's online. So for, you know, and again, I, I, I won't suggest that we don't make mistakes because we do. We do make mistakes. But overall, when you look at, you know, how our customers are served in totality, are, the experience is overwhelmingly positive, right? And so when it comes to that percentage, that, that's exactly what we're aiming for, right? Is to have a customer wait time that's less than, you know, far less than a minute. And then the average experience is being two minutes and 45. That does take into account, you know, those customers that have those unfortunate circumstances where they're waiting 45 minutes. There's also customers that go through the system and, you know, their, their issue is resolved within a minute. And so ultimately, you know, I, I think we, we have metrics and, you know, safety is always first and foremost when it comes to the way we operate. That's the most important thing. But second to that is our customer experience. And, and, and there's, you know, there's not a person in our organization that's not measured to how, you know, we treat our customers and whether or not we're delighting our customers. And, and again, we're not perfect and, and that sounds like a terrible scenario. And that's not one that we're trying to duplicate at all. We're trying to eliminate those things from happening. But we have, we have really invested in, in, in technology that's going to help us be better so that customers don't have to wait, to what you said, member Green.
Hey Carson, was this during the last snowstorm? Do you know the timeframe?
I, I know it was within the last couple of weeks. I don't know if it was like right during this, the snowstorm. But just to point out your response, Mr. Santiago. Um, but just to point out your response, Mr. Santiago, you, you said that it's average. It says average fifty seconds and current maximum two fifty one. So I don't see how you can say maximum if this one person had a forty five minute wait and then a thirty minute wait, both fail. That, that's, I, at least be, I, there's clearly that's not a maximum. A maximum would be, you know, at least forty five, forty six, forty seven minutes, knowing that it happened at least once. So just to, you know, maximum means maximum.
Yeah, and I, and I, I, I will get a definition for what that maximum means. I don't know if that's the maximum average or not, but I, I certainly can appreciate what you're saying, member green. And I can see how that can be read that way, which is like, you know, um, what happens to, what happened to all the customers that waited three minutes? Or all the customers that waited five minutes? So I, I certainly will, will get a, uh, a better definition of, um, what that maximum, uh, wait time that.
And we would like to, um, if possible, see examples of how you report on your customer service times. Um, trends like Mr. Kwanabe asked for, um, details to, you know, the types of issues, the types of calls, the types of, um, turnarounds, et cetera. And then also we're interested in how you report, um, both to customers and to municipalities on, um, the, the streams, the amount of rejection, um, the distribution streams, the details around that.
I can tell you for sure that Pam, who is our customer service, uh, kind of expert for the area, Carson, he, she can dial it into zip code in area code. She can kind of figure out, here's what the responses are, here's what it looks like. I want you to expand a little bit more on stream. You want rejection of recyclables by recyclable or just here's the commercial containers where they were overfilled? Cause that's, that's
We're not interested in commercial numbers because we're only looking at residential.
You pick up, you, you're talking about residential, commercial, I'm sorry, residential recycling containers that we didn't pick up? Or resident recycling containers that had contamination in them?
Contamination. Yeah, cause there's, a lot of people have been interested in like, you know, the whole stories that have been published in media about how, you know, when China stopped taking recycling materials and, and hearing stories about recycling ending up in landfills. And I know that things are better than that now, but we are interested in how that's reported and what we can count on there.
Yeah, absolutely. And Mark and his team have a great story of how they've been able to find, uh, mills and other places to get those recyclables taken care of. Um, but I think we can work on that. And Cindy, you can help us with that as well, right? On those residential containers.
Yeah, I, we don't, I mean, we, we have to be, you know, I mean, we're, we're not gonna have data down to the, to, to the residential.
Yeah, yeah, I recognize you don't measure it to the house.
But, but, but certainly in terms of, you know, stream composition and, you know, where those materials, you know, how much of those materials are getting recycled and that type of stuff? I mean, you know, we, we have some pretty sophisticated, because I think we answered the question, we have outbound matrix. So, you know, we're, we, we know the amount of material that we're moving from a, from a, um, from a, from a product standpoint or exit standpoint from the MRF, so.
Right, and it sounds like you guys keep getting more granular on how well you can identify contaminants in the recycling stream. And that's very interesting to us as well, because we do, you know, a, as much as our efforts are towards, um, benefiting the environment, um, that, that's, which is a big part of this. Like we do want to maximize recycling and, and reduce overall waste. In addition to having, you know, the best cost, obviously, and the best service that we can get for, you know, our community. Um, I also, you said
One thing I want, what you said on that one. So the, wh- when the, when the, the most challenging times in the recycling business, you know, came about, we may not have been able to sell our products on certain grades. What we did is we had to pay to get rid of them. And that was, we were paying the mills to take the material. We were paying the transportation costs to the coast and picking up those costs. So we incurred the actual costs associated with that because we are in the recycling business and that is our, our, that is what we do. Is we make finished products for our mill customers. And during this time of, you know, COVID, that's been even more critical as because it fills such a vital need in the supply chain. But, you know, those are, you know, there were great stories that flashes through there. But if you have a, a quality partner and you've got a great transparent program, you know what your material is coming in. You know, we can share the outbound summaries of where we're going. We do it under confidentiality agreements because it is business confidential information. But, you know, when you select waste management as your partner, we'll be more than happy to sit down with the city of Inglewood and their designated representatives and give you a great snapshot of where your material goes. Because it doesn't always go to the same mill in Maluga, Washington or in Cedar Rapids, Iowa. We go and we try and get the best possible price for our customers and for our shareholders. And with that, so we'll change, we'll move markets, but a lot of it is too, is we don't hedge recycling markets. We move the material every single month is our goal to have an empty floor. So we want movement in there because we don't want to be sitting on several thousand tons of material. Just on a scale volume, I mean Franklin Street MRF, which is the largest single stream MRF in Denver. You know, we did eleven thousand tons last month of recyclables. That's a lot of material, so we have to keep it moving and we have to have great relationships with it. But we give you that level of transparency when you, when you sign up with WM. We can give you and talk to you about where your material's going and you can tell us your wishes. That's a really nice thing about our recycling program is we've heard loud and clear from our Colorado stakeholders, our customers. Hey, we want more domestic recycling. So what have we done? We've gone out and we have sourced better contracts for OCC. We've got to develop, we developed a relationship with a mill in Louisiana to take our mixed paper. That was a very stable outlet that we knew was gonna get turned back into your Home Depot boxes. We went out and found those relationships and established those lanes and that's what's really built our program in Colorado. I'd say one of the most successful ones in the country.
That's awesome. Thank you. And I, I wasn't even expecting that level of granularity as far as where the material goes. That would be cool and I get that you guys would need to keep that proprietary. I was more talking about like, uh, percentages of rejected recycling loads, stuff like that, um, that, that actually can't go through it recycling due to contamination.
Yeah, the great thing is, is we try not to reject loads. I think we have maybe one load or two loads a month that we have to reject. And it's typically because somebody puts something in there they shouldn't have. You know, there's no way if somebody dumps five gallon of cooking oil or they put, you know, bags of garbage in there. That's the kind of the ninety ten rule I was talking about. The ones that don't care about it can really spoil an entire load. And there's enough, there's no, I'll be honest, we've got robots, we've got optical sawers, we've got some really cool technology at the MRF that I don't have any pixie dust that magically takes trash and turns it into, to recycle. We're still looking for that widget, but I've not found it yet. We're still at the robot stage.
Thank you.
And I, and, uh, member green, have you come to our facility or are you coming to our facility? I, I think that's, isn't, isn't that, wasn't that gonna be part of the?
I don't believe we've done any scheduling around that, but I, I'm sure we have members on this committee who would be interested. I mean, I would be. Yeah, that, that would be great. We'd like to get that scheduled. Maybe, uh, Director DeAndrea can work with you on getting a, a time for us to do that.
Just let us know what's convenient for you. We'll get it set up. It, it's great. We've got optical sorters, we've got, we're testing robots on the fiber. We've got the best technology. We're actually putting in a new technology. We have grant with the state. It'll be going into the next couple of months with some new increased recoveries, you know, so we, it's, it's a great story. It's an open book and that's part of the transparency we have with it is we want you to feel comfortable. When you, when it's going into your truck and you know what's going to waste management, we want you to be comfortable that you know where it's going. That, you know, and we've taken some dramatic steps and it's hurt us as a company sometimes, but we took a huge step. Plastics in the ocean is a huge issue. We no longer export, uh, any plastic that's collected via the single string program. Because holders want, and that's what our customers want. And we've been able to build a really strong recycling infrastructure within the US to meet those needs and to fill that gap. And that's what everybody asks from us and that's what we want to do is because we don't want to go ahead and burden some other third world country, developing nation where we're gonna give them our problems and force it on their lack of infrastructure. We've got the infrastructure we need in the States to be able to do this. We've got the push control and we can get it back in the stream of commerce in a very short order. So, you know, transparent, happy to talk to you about all those great stuff, things.
Um, one last question that's kind of related to that, um, in your response, you said that waste management is not familiar with the municipal measurement program? Where we heard about that was there's a state of Colorado, um, document that I'll make sure we get to you if you guys aren't familiar with it. But it's a recommend, it's a whole series of recommendations to municipalities from the state for how to, um, improve, uh, waste and recycling stream diversion, et cetera. And there's a, a national, um, reporting system that the state recommends municipalities um, participate in, and it's something that would have to happen from the reports from the haulers. So I was really surprised that you guys weren't familiar with it because it's this national program that is being pushed by the state of Colorado.
So when you say the state of Colorado, you gotta get a little more granular.
Yeah, let me find the report. It's in the Excuse me?
Can you do a time check? I just want to make sure we're not going over time here.
All right. It, I'll just name this report. It's the, the State of Recycling and Composting in Colorado, Fourth Edition, twenty twenty. Uh, oh, it's CoPerg, um, EcoCycle.
Okay, so those are outside of the state of Colorado, so those aren't, you know, those are third party organizations, CoPerg.
Okay.
Colorado Public Interest Research Group. And EcoCycle is also a other, uh, outside of the state of Colorado nonprofit group. Um, we work really with the Colorado Department of Health and Environment on what the EPA and what they state as recyclables. So I'll, I'll push back a little bit on you there. Um, that's not exactly the kind of state standards. Um, I, I know the folks at CoPerg, I know the folks at EcoCycle, but that's not, that's not a state standard that we would go by. We will go with A or CDPHE.
And, and Hutch, I, I think, I think the US EPA supports a program called Retract and we participate in Retract and Retract is, you know, gathers data from states. And so I think that's, that's the one that we heard of and know about and participated.
Interesting, okay. Yeah, so they call this state level recommendations. And then of course, the buy-ins into CoPerg are a lot of government municipality like participants.
CoPerg has a lot of folks in there, but
Yeah.
They're not, they're not official.
All right. Does anyone else have any questions? All right, well, thank you very much for coming and we really appreciate your time and answering our questions and thank you.
Yeah, ab- absolutely. We really appreciate the time. Thanks for engaging with us.
Look forward to it.
Thanks for having us. Thank you.
Thanks to all of you.
Bye bye.
All right, um, since we are so over time. And we could get, we could deal with our, um, minute approvals pretty quickly unless anyone's got any, um, corrections or issues. Is there a motion to approve two twenty three, twenty one, uh, revised meeting minutes?
Motion to approve, this is Dane Borman.
Is there a second?
A second, this is Kanji.
Thank you. Uh, Director DeAndrea, will you please take our vote on that?
Yep. Member Borman or excuse me, Vice Chair Borman?
Yes.
Member Brinker?
Yes.
Member Brown?
Yes.
Member Hubka? Oh, doesn't look like, uh, member Hubka's on.
Do we still have a quorum?
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
Let me just make sure she's no, there's nobody in the attendees section. All right, um, member Kawanabe?
Yes.
Member Lab?
Yes.
And Chair Green?
Yes. Is there a motion to approve the three twenty two, twenty one, uh, meeting minutes?
Motion to approve three twenty one minutes.
Thank you.
A second.
Thank you.
All right. Member Borman?
Yes.
Member Brinker?
Yes.
Member Brown?
Yes.
Member Hubka? Member Kawanabe?
Yes.
Member Lab?
Yes.
And Chair Green?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries.
Um, I don't have anything to bring up. Um, does anyone else on the committee? I would suggest we address the other things we were gonna talk about in our next meeting.
Marcie, other hand up.
Oh, go ahead, Member Brown. Sorry. Thank you, uh, Member Quanabe.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I know this really probably doesn't have much to do with the trash committee and thank you for listening to me. But now we are, uh, having these meetings on Mondays when council is now meeting. And if you remember, I didn't want meetings on Monday. But now a council meeting is going on while we are having a trash meeting. And my problem is this is that I like to make public comments. And that's only my time to do so in front of council. So I'm just wondering, I mean, it's fine with me if you all want to stay on schedule, but you know, I want my voice to be heard at council meetings. So I'm just letting you know now that we are on the same schedule as council meetings.
I didn't realize that. So we ended up flipping or city council flipped and now we're not on the study session nights?
No, because there were five Mondays in March.
Oh.
Chair Green, so now they're doing a council meeting tonight and we're missed, I'm missing it or
Okay.
you all are. And it's just not sitting right with me, I guess. Because I do like to hear them and I do like to make public comments.
Understood. Does anyone else have any thoughts on that? I, I would prefer to not do it at the same time as a city council meeting as well.
Yeah, let's go on their study session.
I agree.
Meetings like we talked about before, but then that leaves the question, do we meet next week or do we meet for three weeks from now?
Yeah.
Um, I think I might have a problem for next week because, you know, I, I didn't realize that council meeting was tonight and then I started looking it up and I'd already made plans. But, you know, it, it, it's the committee, what it, whatever the committee wants to do.
Well, it sounds like there's several of us agree that that would be, it'd be better to be back on the study schedule. Uh, how do you feel about three weeks, uh, Director DeAndrea? Does that really put you off?
No, that should be fine. Um, our plan right now is to go to council. I've, I've got the, uh, we still need to have another meeting to kind of talk about these issues that have come out with the hauler discussion.
Oh yeah, I think we should all be able to discuss thoughts from everything we've learned.
Yeah, but I'm close to at least updating the RFP document to where I could, once we have that discussion, just take a few more days probably and then be able to get it back out to everybody for review. So I think one more meeting, um, would help us wrap up those issues to the point where we could then put the RFP out for review by the committee. So three weeks from now might be great.
Um, okay. I mean, we're in
Is it at all possible to have a meeting next week instead of waiting three weeks or in addition to three weeks?
Sure, yeah, next week would work fine for me too. They've got, um, they've got city attorney interviews next Monday, so there, it will be open to the public, but there'd be no public comment. So it'd be like a study session next week.
Is there a preference, Director?
Yeah.
I may have to miss, uh, or at least be an hour late if we do next week just because I have patients scheduled. But I'm sure you guys can deal with it for at least a little while, right? Will we be able to establish a quorum without a?
I think we'd be able to have a quorum, but I, I mean, personally, I would rather not lose Vice Chair Borman for a discussion about what we've learned. And I feel like scheduling for a week from today after two and a half hours today is pretty aggressive. Um, and we just heard that Mark, um, Member Brown wouldn't be able to attend next week either. I, I would rather push to where we have enough time that everyone can participate personally.
Do we need or we could look for Tuesday? Cause I think that worked last time for everybody too. So maybe two Maybe two weeks from tomorrow, which let me look at calendar. Would be the twentieth of April.
Is anyone not able to do that?
I'm okay.
I think I'm okay too.
I can do that.
Tuesdays regularly? But that's fine though.
I mean, I would be fine with Tuesdays or switching back to the study session nights. Either way, for me, I mean, I, we just kind of need to get a consensus. And maybe the way to do this is through email, uh, since not everyone's here too. Um, Director DeAndrea, will you do one of those, um, those polls to, I know that they can be a pain, but. Let's, let's get everyone's input before we.
Okay.
Light on this. And let's see if everyone can do Tuesday next week. And if they can, let's do that. And then otherwise, let's get on, let's just go to the, um. Study council.
Okay. So Tuesday of the following week, not next Tuesday, but the twentieth, April twentieth. So be two weeks from tomorrow.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's try that.
Okay. Yeah. So please poll us and then we'll figure it out from there. Is, does anyone else have anything? Was that all you had, uh, Member Brown?
Uh, so I, I'm just asking, so, um, Director DeAndrea, can you, are you polling for two weeks from tomorrow? And would you also be polling for three weeks from today?
Correct. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. And then this other communications, that was just a list of what was in there. That's not really anything to address, right? On our agenda. Okay, then, uh, all right. Sorry, it went so long, guys, but I think we, uh, are all, I think we did a good job getting a lot of info out of. Those two haulers. It'll be, it'll be interesting to discuss all this. So thank you and I'll call the meeting adjourned.
Sounds good. Have a good night all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Bye.
Good night.